Appreciate it. We're just reconvening from closed session and I ask the attorney to make a report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action from closed session this evening.
Thank you. So we will now open and start the regular city council meeting. And I'll ask Liz Aguirre to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. I ask all of you to please rise for a moment of silent prayer, remain standing for the flag salute to be presented to us by the Cub Scout Pack Eighty-Four, Den Three.
Will the audience please rise for the presentation of the colors? Color Guard advance. Prepare to post colors. Post colors. Will the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Cub Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color Guards return to posts.
Thank you, Scouts. I'd let that be a lesson to all when the Scouts are coming in or the American flags coming in, either get out of the way or help hold it up. Thank you. Video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable Fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel Fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, first item is agenda approval additions and or deletions. Are there any?
D six.
B six?
D six. He isn't David.
D three.
I had a recommendation. There's an item for the Delta Greens answer that you have.
Yep.
Can we combine that with the other Delta Greens item and just do them together?
At the council's pleasure.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll just go ahead and let you go first.
I wanted to pull item D one the minutes.
Sorry, I got lost there.
That's okay, I got him.
Uh, any public comments?
Under Government Code, Section Five-Four-Nine-Five-Four Point Three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Dan Tindall, did you want to wait to the item or would you like to go right now? You want to wait? Okay. Mariella and Lucia?
Hi, my name's Lucia Prado and I'm the chairman from the Galt City Youth Committee. I'm a junior at Galt High School. And, um, well, we just decided to come today and talk to you guys a little bit about what we've been up to lately. And, um, this year was the first year we hosted the Galt Clean Pageant and it was the set nunia, so that went pretty great. Um, we also did a light parade and, um, it was amazing how we felt the momentum from the Galt citizens come about. Um, it was great and, um, we hope to continue it. Like, we want to make it a tradition here in Galt. And, um, also Diversity Day was a great success. That happened a long ago. Um, many cultures were representative and, um, the community came together. It was really nice. So, yeah, it's just a little bit about what we've done, so.
Hi. Hi, my name is Mariella Avrada and I'm a member of the, um, youth... of the youth... commu... uh, committee, sorry. Um, and crafting for Santa was also a success. And, um, we felt as if we were giving back to our community by participating in this event. And also, um, we elected officials which were Forbien Munoz and Frank. And that is it. Thank you.
Mariella, can you tell me how many, uh, youths, um, participated in the crafting of Santa?
Well, there was a lot. There was like about thirty. There was about, yeah.
High school?
Yeah.
What about the, um, the young ones that you... you were entertaining? How about how many of those were involved?
It wa... well, it was supposed to be, um, thirty or... It was, yeah, it was over twenty. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This would be a good time to point out to everybody that we, um, have the Galt Community of Character Pledge hanging in the council chambers, um, not only for the city council but for the elementary school board and the high school board who also use the council. So, um, just to... to give everybody a chance to come look at it. Al Baldwin?
Good evening, council staff and everybody. Happy New Year. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, community of character and diversity. Wanted to say Happy New Year to you all. I'm sure you're all looking forward to all the challenges and opportunities that you're going to have this year. I just wanted to say I'm wishing you everything that... that good could come with it. You've got challenges ahead of you like, uh, budgets and layoffs and some positive things, maybe some businesses coming into Galt. I was reading the paper and I noticed, um, Gochocks is maybe going out and, uh, Mervyn's, of course, did go out. There's so many businesses that are going out and so many layoffs. Lincoln is starting to lay off people possibly and so is Sacramento already. And, uh, Tracy and some of these other cities are doing it too. So it sure is good to hear that we have some control over this. And, uh, it's great to live in a town that... that we can, uh, look forward to seeing some positive things. So just wanted to say Happy New Year. Thank you for everything and we're looking for a great year here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Wire?
Uh, I'm Dennis Wire. I live in Galt. And Barbara, weren't you involved with the youth committee in appointing the...
Yes, I was.
Is... does the mayor appoint a new person or do you get to carry on with the youth?
I'm just an interested person. I'm not in charge of them.
Oh, okay. There's no council member particularly that, uh, is involved with the youth?
The council appoints, um, interested adults to be the sponsors.
Oh, good. Uh-huh, that's great. Well, it was good to see these ladies speak, young ladies. I think it's been very inspiring to see, uh, them become so involved in the community and so proud of the community and all these new things, the parades they're talking about and, uh, the... the, I guess, the activities. They even had some younger children that they involved in crafts and things. That was great. And, um, I think that we had a lot of things to be proud for in two thousand eight. Uh, Mrs. Thornton Brown put us on the map with her Olympic gold medal. And, um, we accomplished a conversion ordinance which the mobile home park owners, mobile homeowners appreciate very much. And we hope for two thousand nine that we'll get a rent control ordinance passed. We also, uh, by the way, we passed Major R and a lot of the seniors worked hard on Major R to get it passed and we're very grateful that it did. Uh, so my goals for two thousand nine are continue to support youth programs. Now I got this for free at a thrift store. It's a Galt Boys and Girls Club, some kind of golf tournament they had. My goal is to be able to contribute financially to the Boys and Girls Club, whatever I can give this year, okay? And I hope that everybody in this room will do the same thing. I think you talked about it behind the closed doors before in an information item. So will we be hearing anything about that? Is there anything that's being done?
Our city manager is going to give an update tonight.
Fantastic. Uh, well, we... they inspire us and it should be our goal to inspire them and never to turn them off or to turn away. I think that we... we need to show our love in action. We need to be friendly, not just to the youth but to each other. To speak to everybody in the community as we meet them, make eye contact, walk tall, but humble, rich or poor. And I know a lot of you guys and I think a lot of you. And I hope to meet the rest that I don't know. And as far as the Boys and Girls, um, there's other things they can do besides that club. There's... the Galt High has a lot of after-school programs which are excellent now and there's been some funding opened up for that. Also, consider going to a church youth group. I was a youth director for seven years in various churches, various denominations, in an independent Bible church in Oregon. And, uh, I don't care if the kid is an atheist. Come to our youth group. We welcome him with open arms of whatever his viewpoints are. Well, you know, he's willing to... he's welcome to speak whatever he wants and discuss whatever he wants and he will receive just as much appreciation as anybody else. So if you're looking for a place for activities, consider going to the youth, uh, church groups. Also, learn music or art. I was able to have piano lessons when I was young and I picked up the guitar by myself. I wrote some songs which I enjoyed. Music lifts the soul like nothing else. And so does art. If you... if you can't appreciate music, then get into art. Painting, drawing, whatever. And I hope that when we speak, that we can speak from the heart or from the soul, whichever you prefer, and that we're not just speaking off the top of our head or worse yet, in some kind of deceit. Let's speak openly and honestly to each other. And I would... I wish somebody would, uh, nominate me for that character group because I'd like to be a part of it. It would honor me a lot. Thank you.
Certainly would be welcome to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wire.
John Slaughterback?
John Slaughterback, now I live in the city of Galt. How's everybody doing tonight? Hope everybody's fine. I moved to Galt in November of nineteen ninety-nine. Three months later, uh, the newspaper came out with an article that Galt has a wastewater problem and a special council meeting was planned. After that council meeting, gradually I became more and more interested in Galt's wastewater problem. And I searched the internet for information related to other cities' wastewater problems. I came to Galt with some working knowledge of water quality control requirements and regional's ever-increasing water standards. Any resident living in the area of the wastewater treatment plant can file a complaint with Regional Water Quality Control Board and any complaint from residents living in this area will merit... will have merit and will have... the city will have to address these complaints. With this development and its influential residents, there will be many complaints. We need to remember that church property will develop also. Number one complaint that I see, there's many, but number one, biosolids, which is human waste. Application of biosolids on city-owned land will have to be terminated. Contract off-hauling biosolids will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. The city has entertained the possibility of upgrading the city's biosolids handling in order to produce dry... a dry product for our Class B biosolids, which could cost three to five million dollars for this upgrade. The advantage of this procedure is a dry product which is easier to handle and easier to dispose of at reduced cost for disposal. Dry biosolids handling will produce airborne particles and these airborne particles will settle in the neighborhood. These influential residents will not tolerate human waste particles in the air. I researched one city that upgraded to produce Grade A biosolids, which is also a dry product, but it is much easier to dispose of with additional upgrade costs in the millions of dollars. Their processing of biosolids was warehoused. Another upgrade, warehoused. It is very possible in the future the entire wastewater treatment plant will have to be warehoused. Containment of contaminants. Of course, that would be some years in the future, but is that what we wish on future citizens of Galt? Some of these problems that we will have created won't be evident in the early stages of development. As this development comes to its completion and every... everyone feels they have weathered the storm, these problems will gradually rain down upon Galt, the city of Galt. There are cities with over one hundred dollar sewer rates. This planning is how they got there. Mayor said, "Take a piece of paper, draw a line down through the center, plus on one side, negative on the other." He said he didn't see no negatives. Well, Mayor, you must not be looking for any negatives because there's a lot of negatives out there. Mayor, you need to do some research in order to gain some knowledge on this subject or contract it out and do a feasibility study or form a committee and they can research this subject. You can't just say there's no negatives. This doesn't make it so. Negatives, I want to go to a different subject. I got time. Uh, negative campaigning. Meredith and Haynes were hurt and upset by the slanderous remarks this group made about their character and they lashed out the only way they knew. Trying to videotape someone at their home is minor compared to what this group has slandered and done to them. Questions of ethics. I'd like to ask the city attorney if he could answer this question. A comment in an old ad news sent to me, Randy Selden, said, "I am in favor of the Delta Greens project and I have been in favor of it for twelve years. Shouldn't this have been disclosed during the campaign? I have heard council comment numerous times about the League of California Cities, how important it is to learn and practice the rules of good government. Ethics training is one of their criteria's." I copied some of this information from the website. I'd like to share some of this information with you now. A note about holding multiple offices. If you already hold a public office and can... and accept a second one, that would subject you to conflicting...
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Ms. Slaughterback.
Rodney Sanhope?
Before we move on, uh, I'll ask that the attorney get with, uh, Mr. Slaughterback if he... that he proposed a question to you, so at another time if you could, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rodney Sanhope from the city of Galt and I just want to, um, coming in before you guys tonight to thank you guys for your help and support in Yellow Ribbon America's Operation Christmas for our troops and their family. After living twelve days in a shed in the parking lot of Arden Fair Mall, we had our best year ever with ten thousand toys collected for the children of deployed troops. I want to thank, uh, Darrell Clare for coming out for our press conference with Senator Steinberg and Assemblyman Adams on the first day. It was freezing cold, nine o'clock in the morning and he drove all the way from there. Uh, I want to thank Andrew Meredith and the IBEW for, uh, helping us out by spreading the word, collecting toys. Uh, I want to thank David and Shannon Bramwell, Jerry Slinker, they came by to make donations, Barbara Payne, Evelyn Moore, for phone calls keeping me motivated because, uh, it got real cold in the shed, so, um... It was, yeah, the night Channel Three broadcast live, they told me they wanted to broadcast me on the news because it was going to be twenty-one degrees that night. I was like, "What?" Mr. Hodge mailed in a check for fifty bucks. He was here actually helping with the Boys and Girls Clubs. I thought that was real nice because with the Boys and Girls Club in dire need to move that motivates me even more. And I especially want to thank David Herberger, the Galt Herald and Rachel Ackerman for probably one of the nicest... this is my fourth time doing it and I have never seen an article that made me feel so completely wonderful for what I do other than meeting the actual military families that received the toys. So I just want to thank the city, the city council and the citizens for your guys' support in this. And other than that, I would like to offer my services before my next year in the shed. Anything I can do to help the Boys and Girls Club, anybody, if you want to put together a golf tournament, you want to do the nightclub thing, uh, I am around. So I would love to help anything to keep the Boys and Girls Club afloat.
And before you go, as a... as a former deployed soldier who relied on people like you in the community to take care of my family while I was gone, I wanted to give the audience an opportunity to give you a round of applause for all of your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rodney.
Dan Jimenez?
Um, Dan Jimenez and I live in the city. Uh, my public comment tonight is for Mayor Shelton. When you became mayor, there was an article in our local paper that, um, stated Shelton gets ready to lead by example and taking no sides. I would like to read, uh, some of the comments that you made in that, uh, article. "My first goal is that we as a council respect not only each other but those in the community as a whole," said Shelton. "Allowing people to know that it's okay not to agree or to have a different opinion than mine." "I think it's time for this council mem... I think it's time for council members to come together in a positive way and deal with the problems that affect our community," said Shelton. "We must understand there are no sides when we choose to make decisions that will affect our future. And I will do whatever possible to make sure that all council members have a chance to voice their opinion." I must have read this article several times because I was impressed by it. I thought you meant you were going to lead by good conduct, ethics and fair play at the very least. And I thought, you know, this is a great recipe for success. Then I attended the last council meeting. When your good friend Jerry, who you continually kept referring to by his first name only, finished his Delta Greens presentation, he said he would like a consensus from this council. It was obvious that you don't know what consensus means. It means collective opinion by everybody or a general agreement. It's in the dictionary if you'd like to look it up. He did not say he wanted a consensus from them who only favored his project. You quickly turned to Councilwoman Payne, who went on for three minutes and forty-five seconds on how Delta Greens is going to save Galt. Then Councilman Clare went on for five minutes, three seconds, and I'll say with no interruptions from you. Then you turned to Councilmen Haynes and Meredith and said, "Can't believe you said this, Mr. Mayor. Do you guys have brief statements to make?" With that statement, you pigeonholed them and isolated them. When Councilman Haynes tried to arrive at a consensus by asking questions, you got defensive, Mr. Mayor, because you thought your good buddies were under attack. You lost control and started yelling out of order and cut him right off. I really don't understand why you're so worried because you know you have the votes for this project in your back pocket by the other two council members. Then I thought about the statement you made about wanting to lead by example. What would have been a more accurate statement by you is that you're going to lead by little flexibility and total domination. Now this is not a good recipe for success. The way you conducted yourself flies in the face of the stinkment you made of, "I will do whatever possible to make sure all council members have a chance to voice their opinion." It's obvious you're going to try and force your will on this council at every turn. The biggest accomplishment you have managed so far is to divide this council more than it's ever been. It's obvious you don't respect these two councilmen. But you have to remember, Mr. Mayor, they're your peers, not your subordinates. Take an honest step back, review your performance so far and you'll see this is true. Or if this doesn't work for you, please don't make any more public statements that you know you have no intentions of keeping. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Gail Bruce? Gail, do you want to talk now or was your sheet for Delta Greens? You want to do it now? Okay, go ahead and come on up.
Mayor and councilmen, I want to wish you a good new year and a... very prosperous one and hopefully, uh, everything will turn out all right. I wanted to, uh, say just a few short words, uh, about the Delta Greens development process. I want to urge you, council members, to rec... to... I want to urge you to... to recommend the action that's here in the, uh, agenda that the city councils... council received the report and authorized city manager to send the attached letter so that we can go ahead with this, uh, Delta Greens project. I think it's good and, uh, I'm all for it. I have no vested interest other than seeing the... the city prosper. That's been my goal all along. And, uh, with that, I thank you for listening and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you, Gail Bruce.
Thanks.
Um, one more. Tracy Gross, did you want to speak now or under Delta Greens?
Hi, my name's Tracy Gross. I live in the city of Galt. For a lot of us, it's been a tough ending to a year and a, um, tough beginning to a new year with the passing of, you know, Judge Jim Hinky and I hope all of you keep his family in your prayers. I came up to talk again about Delta Greens. I was a little surprised when I read what was in tonight's agenda. Last meeting, we heard about how Lincoln was so helped by the development up there, similar to this development. similar to this development. And last night on the news, you know, Lincoln's having financial problems, so this wasn't their savior, and I don't think it'll be Galt. And again, no one's arguing about this development itself. Again, we're getting back to the location of where they're trying to put this. So, with everything that's happened in this past week with, in our little city with Mr. Hinke, I didn't get much of a chance to put anything together. So, I wanted to read my questions, but I wanted you to have a copy of them, too. We all know what pre means, but I actually wanted to get a definition off the Internet of annexation, and it does say that it is the formal act of requiring something and/or the incorporation by joining or uniting. So, here's my questions. I'll just kind of read them for you. Number one, how long has the city been doing pre-annexation agreements? Number two, how do we decide which developments we extend this to? Number three, if this is new to Galt, are we setting precedent for future developments? Number four, if we're setting precedence, do we have other developments right behind this one that you're going to do the same pre-annexation agreement with? Number five, why are we doing so much work with a development that hasn't filed the appropriate paperwork yet? Number six, how can it be said that the fiscal impact is all on the developer when the city is using man-hours to have the meetings and to write these letters? Number seven, is Delta Greens paying the city back for the man-hours? Number eight, and this probably should have been maybe my first question, but how did we get from the city council agreeing to discuss the steps necessary to process the development application? That's a quote. I got it off the paperwork. To the need to develop a pre-annexation agreement? I must have missed something, but I was here at that last meeting, and I didn't see where we got from helping them figure out how to do the paperwork to giving them this pre-approval for their development before they even get started with it or file their paperwork. I'm really lost here. Number nine, why did this city allow the members of a political action committee to sit in on this meeting? If it was between the city and the developer, why did we have a group that's an actual political action committee sit in on it? That I was also confused with. Number 10, this one's kind of directed at the city attorney. Is this the way we're doing all this? Is this legal? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Before we move, Ted, I'd like to ask you and staff to get with the individual and answer these questions, if you would, please. But Tracy?
Thank you. Next.
Is there anyone else that has general comments or wants to speak right now? Well, we're not on the Delta Greens issue yet, but we'll be there soon, so... Anyone else?
We're going to move into informational consent calendar.
Let me read it.
The next item is informational consent calendar. I'll ask the city clerk to read the items. We had one that was... One item that was pulled.
Actually, um, I'll read all the items and items... Oh. Do you want to speak under the item, though? Or you want to speak now?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
So, she...
I had you under Delta Greens.
Yeah. She asked if anyone else wanted to speak before we moved on.
Let me just...
Okay, can we... Mr. Smith, can we go ahead and wait because we're right in the middle of doing this consent agenda? Real quick, let her read them off first, please. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Item number one, which was pulled and will be discussed, the minutes for the special and regular council meetings of December 16th. Item number two, the City of Galt warrants. Item number three, which was pulled and for discussion, authorization for the city manager to execute agreements with the State Board of Equalization to administer and operate the city's transaction and use tax. Number four, ordinance number 2008-6, repealing Chapter 1504 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction. Item number five, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending November 2008. And number six, which was pulled for discussion, Central Galt interchange right-of-way acquisitions.
Okay. What are these items pulled for discussion?
Mine was the first item, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
It was item one, and it was the meeting minutes from the last meeting. I've already spoken with our city clerk to ask that a few changes be made. I can see those depicted in the sheet in front of you. Our city clerk's taken the liberty of highlighting them for your pleasure, so...
Sure.
And there are a couple changes in there. There were no changes to any wording. They were just expanding on some wording in the minutes, so nothing was deleted. There was just a little more specific in a few items, and everything's highlighted.
Okay. And then the next item that was pulled?
I'm going to vote on that first.
I'm sorry. Do we want to vote separately? That's fine.
If council's okay, I'd like to move the minutes with these changes. Second?
Motion's been made, and there's a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, have it. Okay. Next item that was pulled?
Okay, the next item is the authorization for the city manager to execute an agreement with the State Board of Equalization, pulled by Councilmember Haynes.
Yeah, I'm going to step out. I'm not going to be able to vote on this issue as it's a conflict of interest, so I'll allow the council, us council members, to make their vote and their decision, and any conversation that may go with it.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, just to amplify Councilmember Haynes' statement, the conflict is based upon his employment with the Bureau of Equalization, and under Government Code 1090, because of that employment, he's deemed a remote interest. So, he is not allowed to participate in the vote, but the council is allowed to move ahead and enter into a contract with the board.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. I think the council members knew that, but I don't know if the public knew that. Thank you. So, was there any further discussion on this item?
I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Okay. No further discussion? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Well, at least you got a little stretch. Anyway, we had one other item.
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, item Z6, Central Galt interchange right-of-way acquisition, pulled by Councilmember Payne.
Yes, I pulled that one. In the report, it says that the estimated cost for right-of-way acquisitions through eminent domain could result in extra costs between $10,000 and $20,000. I'm just wondering what fund that would ultimately come out of?
Already budgeted in the Galt interchange project.
And what's the amount that we budgeted for that?
I believe the amount is somewhere about $5.6 million overall. That comes from a combination of local transportation fund, developer funds, and Measure A, sales tax, and funding.
My concern was that we did have money budgeted for it in case that was necessary. Thank you. And I would move to approve.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And let's see, what do we have left for the remainder?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
We're getting double seconds over here. No further discussion? We'll call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Now, we'll move back to, we had a couple of individuals that wanted to speak, and then after that, we'll follow back through with presentations.
Okay.
I'd like to thank you for giving me a little bit of time to collect my thoughts. My name is Dick Smith, and along with my wife Nancy, who I've been married to for 57 years, we've been a resident of Galt since 1994. I also have five other members of my family who live in Galt, two of which attend the Galt schools. So, I hope that many of you can see why I have a vested interest in our city and its future fiscal stability. Yesterday, four members of the group involved in the Delta Greens project met with Peter Brundage, the executive officer of LAFCO, and Donald Lockhart, assistant and executive officer in their Sacramento office. The meeting lasted over an hour and a half, during which time we covered the history of the Delta Greens project, which has spanned over 12 years. The meeting was extremely cordial and most helpful, as their direction has given us a clear understanding what must be done to be successful in getting the Delta Greens project started. We were very pleased that they suggested that LAFCO meet with the landowners and city staff to discuss procedures for moving ahead with the Sphere of Influence Amendment and EIR for the north area of Twin Cities Road. I really was pumped up after that meeting because I've heard a lot of negative comments in the past about the problems we're going to run into LAFCO, and I got just absolutely the opposite point of view from the two gentlemen we met with yesterday. We've got a lot of work ahead, but based on our first meeting with LAFCO, we are confident we will be able to bring the Delta Greens project to a successful beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry Slinker?
Do I need to answer that? Why did you mention it? Somebody mentioned Galt up there. No. Relax, relax. We all...
Thank you. Yeah, please.
This time, the guy's going to do it, Mr. Stanholm.
Excuse me if you would allow us to... Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Slinker. I live in the county, live in Carmichael. I represent the landowners for Delta Greens. I want to take this opportunity to thank the council for their direction and authorization at your meeting December 16th to have staff meet with the Delta Greens owners to discuss the process of re-establishing the Delta Greens project to the existing general plan update without creating a delay or any additional cost to the city. We met with Assistant City Manager Jason Berman, Community Development Director Kurt Campion, City Attorney Steve Rudolph on December 23rd, 2008. We also want to thank Vice Mayor Barbara Payne for attending as well. Staff was very professional, courteous, and responsive to our request to establish a procedure to process a general plan amendment to allow the Delta Greens project back into the City of Galt general plan. Mr. Anderson's staff report clearly describes the outcome of the meeting. The requested letter from the city to our broker, Bruce Bartelson, is paramount in securing a quality developer for this project as soon as possible. During this economic times, for a quality developer to invest millions of dollars in the City of Galt to the development of Delta Greens, they need assurance that they have support and backing of the city council and staff. So, we urge your favorable vote tonight to direct staff to send the letter. We understand and acknowledge that we must not only secure approvals from the City of Galt, we must also receive approval from LAFCO, who has final approval authority on the sphere and annexation of this property into the City of Galt. Yesterday, as Dick mentioned, we met with LAFCO Executive Officer Peter Brundage and Donald Lockhart, Assistant Executive Officer. It has been nearly three years since LAFCO has had any interreaction with the city. Since that time, there are two new members on the seven-member commission. We were pleased with our meeting that LAFCO staff has offered to help both the landowners and the city as we work forward with a sphere, environmental impact report, and annexation process. We believe with the submission of appropriate studies and reports and concluding an environmental impact report, LAFCO will ultimately approve the sphere and annexation. So, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to make sure everyone wants to wait until the item now that has submitted a sheet? You want to speak now? Okay, go ahead and come on up.
My name is Rick Walters and live in the City of Galt. My remarks are directed to Sheldon and Payne specifically.
Shelton, please.
Sheldon?
Shelton with a P.
With the D?
T. T as in Tom.
Oh, I was wrong. Okay. This is concerning the pre-annexation agreement for the Delta Greens project. It stinks. It really stinks in this council chamber, the first time in four years that I've been here. This is pathetic. Absolutely pathetic. Going back a few years, LAFCO gives input on the general plan update March 2006. Concerned citizens of Galt, members of the environmental community, were at this meeting. At this meeting, both sides addressed their particular concerns. Commissioner Collins stated that the county had no plans for services to be expanded to Area G, which at that time was in a proposed retirement community. Why they would do it now, I don't know. She also stated the county is trying to stay within the SAGHOC blueprint for growth in the region for the next 50 years. Why would they change? Why would they all of a sudden change just because of you guys? We don't know what you said is true. Representative Keith Wagner for Habitat 2020 told the commission at that time, 2006, that the current land use scenario for Galt's general plan is not consistent with LAFCO's policy, the policy, nor is it consistent with the SAGHOC blueprint, blueprint, for the next 50 years. Why would they all of a sudden change in the middle of the stream? It doesn't make sense. It is my understanding that for the past few years, a retirement community proposed next to our wastewater treatment plant has been considered and introduced to various councils, and the end result is always the same. It doesn't fit well. One member of SAGHOC mentioned at a workshop that east of Highway 99 would be the ideal place for the retirement community. Nobody wants to listen to this. You just want tunnel vision, straight through. Wednesday, February 19th, 1997, the Sun Lakes proponents, another retirement community plan fell short last week of securing council support for a sphere of influence expansion needed for the retirement project. Again, you don't want to look at that. The annexation of property west of our treatment plant is a bad idea. The concern is this will open the property in front of our treatment plant for development. This is what citizens commonly refer to as boxing in the treatment plant. I have been to many, many treatment plants in the area, and one thing is for sure, there are no massive retirement communities within the immediate area of the treatment plant. There are no massive retirement communities. Our new general plan document, as is, will have LAFCO and SAGHOC's full support because it represents these agencies' view of the region. It makes no sense to redo or revise our new general plan, spend thousands of taxpayers' money, and throw away six years of planning just because of one developer's wants and needs. It doesn't make sense. We can't tell what the future will bring, but one thing is for certain, water will become less available and a high priority for established communities. Conservation will become mandatory. Lawns will no longer require 56,000 gallons a year because they will be gone. New development will be required to have water conservation programs indoctrinated into their particular development. Treated sewer release requirements will become tightly regulated and controlled. River and streams will be regulated to a higher standard as development continues into the Sacramento Basin. Homes on every inch of ground will not be tolerated. Land set aside for wetlands and habitat will be the way of the future. The foremost issue concerning the Delta Greens Project Island community of 2,600 homes is the fact that there are significant wetlands and wildlife habitat resources and constraints associated with Skunk Creek and Laguna Creek and areas west of our treatment plant. Environmental Impact Report number 2007082092, states page 6-15, quote, "Based upon the information provided in Table 6-2, build-out of the proposed general plan project as is would result in the wastewater treatment plant demand of 8.425 MGD."
Mr. Walters, you touched on that. Thank you for your comments.
Which exceeds the plant ultimate capacity of 6.0 MGD. Which exceeds the plant ultimate capacity of six point zero MGD.
Rick, could I ask you to...
I have, I would've been done.
Okay, but if I let you speak, then I'd study precedence. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
I've been attempting that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tindall, you wanna wait, correct? Al Baldwin, you wanna wait? Tom Newer, you wanna wait for the item? Mike for the item, and Lori for the item? Okay, great, we're done.
So we have one presentation. Right. Yeah. Grace Mossen, would you come forward, please, for a presentation you were gonna give?
I'm missing a lot of fun at these council meetings. Good afternoon, or good evening, mayors, city council, members of the audience. I'm Grace Mossen, I'm the CEO of Community Transportation Agency, and as some of you may or may not know, SCT Link lost its contract, and so I'm no longer doing business as SCT Link, but I am doing as Community Transportation Agency. In the meantime, we have a little tradition that we've had for many years at Community Transportation and even Concilio prior to the name change. We belong to an insurance pool, and we have been in this pool since nineteen eighty, and in two thousand, they started a driver's safety incentive program. And their agencies are just strictly nonprofits, small nonprofit community service type agencies they insure. Part of their tradition, or their thing that they do every year, is they give an agency a Safety Excellence Award, and there are certain criteria that you have to meet for, and as we all know with the highways and the freeways, and driving a bus up and down ninety-nine can be nerve-wracking alone, let alone having disgruntled passengers, or sick kids, or whatever else. This year, two thousand and eight, Community Transportation Agency got the Safety Excellence Award, along with a hundred percent of my staff receiving their driver's safety awards. Some of them are here this evening, I have all their awards there. We usually have a little dinner that I pay for, or the CEO pays for, and we present them at that time. Unfortunately, a lot of them are kinda scattered right now. And I think that our, the drivers of the agency need to be publicly acknowledged, and so I'm going to read off all seventeen drivers, and I will be mailing their certificates to them. They are, says they're, congratulations, and has the two thousand safety award, their name, and it's signed by the president and CEO of Nonprofits United, our insurance pool. The recipients for the both two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight driver's safety awards are John Sheldon, William Martin, Phyllis Jean Porter, Marilyn Miranda, Erlene Manis, Renee Williamson, who has been with the agency eighteen years and is now currently our driver trainer, and I'm very proud of her, she has been through quite a few classes, Erin Keener, Lauren Seibel, Carol Moran, Rosa Sejasabalos, Martha Cabrera, Adora Garcia, Terry Weaver, Mindy Eubanks, Gaylor Jones, and our two newest drivers, Mary Lee Bean, who joined us in two thousand and seven, and Marissa Lal, who joined us also in two thousand and seven. I'll just briefly read the letter that they sent to the agency. It says, "Dear member, Nonprofits United is pleased to honor the exemplary efforts of the pool's safe drivers with the two thousand and eight Safe Driver Awards. Enclosed are your awards for your agency's drivers, as determined by our annual evaluation process and our inputs. Thanks to all the members who return their driver's checklist. We understand that drivers must often contend with challenging conditions in the course of their daily work. We offer our congratulations and thanks to each of the drivers, whose commitment to safety and quality helps ensure the continued success of the insurance pool. Thanks again for your commitment to safety, Peter Hale, vehicle pool administrator." In order to get these awards, the drivers have to have no accidents, no incidents, and I'm very proud of the seventeen drivers that I've worked with over the years, and I thank them all for their continued support. Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you.
Grace, Grace. Could you just wait there a minute? Do you have any of those employees here?
Renee Williamson is here.
Have her stand up, please. In fact, Renee?
And... I brought their certificates to give them that they showed up, but they're not here tonight, unfortunately.
Well, we have a surprise for you.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. We have a plaque. Grace Mossen, appreciation, and many years, doesn't say that. Community transportation, it's bothered me too, okay? For your dedicated service to our community, I wanna thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is unexpected, thank you very much. CTA has been here for twenty-eight years, under the Concilio first, and now under CTA. June Gilmore was CEO for, what, twenty-six? I've been CEO for two. I'm still here, I'm doing special needs now, with two buses and two drivers, so I thank you all for this, this will go on my wall, my new office.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item under presentation, Andrew, you had agreed to move it, right?
Move it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, did we have anything under communications?
I do have something, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
As many of you in the community know, over a year and a half ago, I championed the supercenter ordinance here in the City of Galt, and recently, I've discussed the option of possibly amending the supercenter ordinance to affect the hours of business operation. And I've been working with Walmart representatives over the course of the last six months, and they've asked me to read a press release that will go out officially tomorrow. Today, Walmart committed to amending its proposal for a store on Twin Cities Road at Fermoy Way. In two thousand and seven, the company submitted plans to the city for a one hundred and thirty-two thousand square foot store that would be open twenty-four hours a day. The proposal has now been changed to request operating hours from five AM to midnight. The Twin Cities Road Walmart project is currently undergoing environmental review by the City of Galt, and it is expected that the project will be considered for approval in mid-two thousand and nine. Thank you.
Any other scheduled matters, ordinances, regular calendar, city manager's office? You have three items?
Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over to Paula, but this is a carryover item. The council wanted to continue discussion, so we're here to see what council's desire is.
Paula?
As Ted said, it is a carryover item. I think you had just requested more time to discuss it, and that you didn't wanna make a decision last week. Is this on?
Okay.
So, we are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions on the item? No.
I do. In light of the communication we recently received with the GPOA, and the action that we're speaking of on this item is tied to their program, I guess perhaps to the city manager, what's our intention? I'd rather not take action on this item until I think I have a clearer picture on where the other item is going to go, because the two are tied to one another.
Which item?
The GPOA sent us a, a, a letter declining the last offer that was made to them. I take that to mean that we have no agreement between us right now, and I'm assuming we then have further work to do, but if...
The GPOA, you have an agreement, you have an MOU that states that they were supposed to get four point eight percent. We asked them if they would consider doing it another way, and they said, no, they want the four point eight, as the MOU identifies.
Okay, so is it our then intention that there's no discussions left to be had, that we'll just let the existing contract run?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council members?
And that contract expires just December thirty-first, two thousand and nine.
Right, right. None, I do. As I stated, two meetings, our last meeting, that I am not in concurrence of promoting an individual department head, and it doesn't matter who it is, and give them a raise in conjunction with a union, whether it be this union or another union. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, we have always brought the non-representatives, department heads, basically, and a few other people, in separately.
What's happened in the past was, is that we didn't have separate cost of livings between the unions. What you have before you is a request, the same as it would in the past, for two things. First would be to handle the lieutenants, whether or not they would receive the cost of living, and if so, whether or not it would be at one time, or whether you would automatically tie them to the GPOA. The second one is whether or not the chief would be considered as a part of the GPOA as a department head, separate from the others, whether or not you would grant him the cost of living, whether or not it would be tied to the GPOA, or whether or not it would be an independent one-time request. So those are the three issues that you have, four issues.
So in council, we have to decide.
Now, there's a little bit of complication here, because there was some discussion about the fact that department heads could be handled by contract, but we have two types of department heads. We have at-will, and we have for cause. For cause, department heads do not have contracts, and therefore, there are two different types. The chief is a, an at-will employee, and he does have a contract.
Yeah, it's that, wow, I think we're getting into some items that I will not ask unless I ask in a closed session.
Sure.
So. Pleasure, counsel, maybe I'm the only council member that feels this way, but to me, the chief or any department head needs to be separated from, you know, management and, you know, department heads, anyway, I'm not saying it correctly, but the lieutenants, I would agree, need to be completely separate and in with the union, but no department head. And it wouldn't matter whether it's the chief of the police department, or any, you know, it's Parks and Rec, or it was public works.
I think, I hear what you're saying, and put it a little differently, I think to be fair and equitable across the board, when you're talking to departments, especially for somebody who oversees that very department, I think you gotta be consistent with how you handle them as a department head. I like the way it's written, I agree with it, I think that I'd prefer to see that the chiefs and the lieutenants, and the chief be considered as part of the GPOA, so that as, that anything that they receive, or even cuts, or whatever the case may be, that, that they all be clustered together, so that it's fair and equitable across the board. That would be my preference. So, you got two, two different views here on that issue.
To give the mayor a little support on this issue, I voiced this concern at the last meeting. I strongly feel that the lieutenants have a rightful, they have a rightful responsibility to be associated with the GPOA, but in terms of singling out one department head and tying his salary to the employees that he represents, I just, I can't support it, so I won't be supporting staff's recommendation.
And to hopefully lead to a conclusion of this, then, I'd be willing to make a motion that this evening, we grant the COLA to the lieutenants and take no action on the chief at this time.
Second.
I was, I'm going to...
Further discussion, if there are firsts or seconds?
Um, I don't support the recommendation on either count. I think during these economic times, we need to have the flexibility of considering what's going on, especially with the, on one hand, we're looking at, you can call it a COLA, but it's still a raise, and on the other hand, we're looking at increasing our rates and taxes to our, to our citizens. I think as a council, you can still be fair, it's not closing the door to being fair and equitable to the lieutenants or to the chief of police. I just would like to reserve that decision to the council.
Well, Ted has a question.
Okay.
Or statement, perhaps.
I gotta say this the best way that I can, but in the ten years that I've been here, it has been consistent that the council, upon request for cost of living, has granted that the unrepresented and the department heads are the same as the unions. The only thing that's different here is, is that we separated a pay-for-performance program, and we have two unions with two costs of living. Now, the pay-for-performance is gone, we have, we gotta figure out how we're gonna, you know, replace that. So, the first item with the lieutenants is, is, is separate, and what the request is, is that they would be considered as, you know, part of the, of the GPOA, and then the second part of that question is whether or not they would be tied to the GPA automatically, and that they would never have to come back and make that request. So you have two items to do with the lieutenant, and then you can handle the chief separately.
And to that, because we've already discussed that as soon as the next meeting, we're gonna be getting additional information about revenues and effects of state actions and other things, that's why I say tonight, the only action I would support is the COLA for the lieutenant. I assume we'll be getting a recommendation from you as to all department heads, and what your thinking is going to be about salaries, pay or no pay for performance, or anything else over the long term of the budget period we're in right now. So, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move on that item tonight, but I would, as I've moved and had seconded, the one time for this purpose, COLA for the lieutenant, and then, I think we all need to look at all, as you said, Barbara, the budget issues and everything else in the longer term. But because the COLA's going into effect now, I'd grant that to the lieutenant, to the attorney.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the attorney.
Yes.
Before you call the, call the question, the council does have a resolution before, before it, and what this resolution provided is linking the positions of police unrepresented sworn management to the GPOA contract. What I understand, Councilmember Claire's motion to be, is to amend this resolution such that it would read, linking the positions of the police unrepresented sworn management, with the exception of the chief of police, to the Galt Police Officers Association contract.
Correct.
So with that amendment, would the, would then the council be taking action on this resolution as amended?
It needs to be clarified though, Steve, the amendment would be only for one time and not ongoing, because I think the original resolution would make it ongoing.
Correct.
Well, and now I mean a further clarification, are we voting on just giving a COLA increase to our lieutenants, or are we voting on both that, as well as a process in the future that they will be linked to the GPOA?
Mr. Claire, Councilman Claire's motion, I believe, is a one time at this time for lieutenants, and that it not be ongoing with the GPOA.
Right, and we can address, if we want it to be, in a later action, when we do the rest of the reviews of salaries and department heads, and whether there are or aren't incentives or anything else.
So then, there's no action on this resolution, it's just a separate motion to provide a COLA to the lieutenants on this one time only?
Right, consistent with the current contract.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and no further discussion? Then a motion and seconded, call for the vote?
I think I can support this new motion, as I understand it, so I would say aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Okay.
On that one?
Now, do we need to further?
No, we're...
No, okay, I think we're, yeah, you had a, two other items?
Mr. Mayor, the next item is in regards to the Boys and Girls Club, this is informational only. Councilman Claire and Councilman Meredith attended the last CAS meeting. At that meeting, I think that the decision was that the city would try and provide two months worth of utility support, so that their... months' worth of utility support, so that their offices and their personnel could continue to operate, while their board made a decision as to whether or not they wished to continue the B and G club with the National Boys and Girls Club, or with, or whether or not they wished to consider a new club as an independent nonprofit that was not tied to the national. The council members felt that this two months would give them an opportunity to make that decision. The elementary school at that time indicated that their after-school programs were not going to go away, that they would continue to support whatever employees of the B and G club that they were employed with at this time, and that there was other grant possibilities that could come about. But they also indicated that they didn't feel that these grant possibilities could work with the National Boys and Girls Club. So, we have taken out of my contingency fund money to pay their utilities for two months, and at that time, there'll be a decision made as to what the Boys and Girls Club wished to do in the future.
Okay. And that was informational only?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, next item. Councilmember Meredith, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. You want to turn the projector on?
Oh, sorry, we caught you off.
Just a little warning in the beginning, to say that I'm under the weather would be an understatement. I think I've been blown over and trampled by the weather, so if I drift into a Barry Manilow-type tone tonight, I apologize.
Why don't you break into a Barry Manilow song?
I'll try not to.
Why not?
Randy's shirt is really making me happy up here. There. Here we go. I can see a little of the light, so it's easier to read. Ladies and gentlemen, I've tried to keep this presentation relatively short and on topic. I've also tried to keep it as respectful as possible, so, start from here. LaFco's original reaction to the Delta Greens, why moving forward with Delta Greens could stall our general plan update. On December sixteenth, two thousand and eight, representatives of the Delta Greens project made a long presentation to council regarding their speculative two, twenty-seven-hundred home development proposed outside of GALT. During the course of their presentation, Councilman Haynes and I attempted to point out several discrepancies between fact and fiction associated with Delta Greens. In response to our questions, Councilman Haynes and I were instructed not to ask any further questions. In light of the fact that Councilman Haynes and I were not afforded the opportunity to comment in length about the Delta Greens project, I asked to be placed on the agenda under presentations, to give the community a fair and balanced overview of the history of Delta Greens, and how it will impact our general plan update at LaFco. During the short presentation, I will cover the history of Delta Greens and explain why LaFco posturing over the last fifteen years gives us good indication that not only will Delta Greens likely be denied by the commission, but moving forward to annex the property could cost the City of GALT precious time and general plan update delays. I will also explain why it is my opinion that if council chooses to move forward with Delta Greens, a bifurcated process outside of the general plan is not the answer. During their December sixteenth presentation, Delta Greens spokesman Jerry Slankard asserted that LaFco had already expressed an intent to approve the annexation of Delta Greens into the City of GALT. In truth, Mr. Slankard was referring to an informal decision by the LaFco board members in the mid nineteen nineties to consider allowing GALT to expand its sphere of influence to include the Delta Greens property. From all indications, LaFco staff opposed allowing GALT to annex Delta Greens, pointing out the fact that LaFco policies state that LaFco, quote, "will not approve applications with boundaries which result in islands, corridors, or peninsulas, or further the distortion of existing boundaries." After weighing their mild initial support with the clear LaFco policies that I've just outlined, LaFco voted on June seventh, nineteen ninety-five, to adopt three resolutions that pertain to the City of GALT. Resolution eleven forty-six makes repeated references to eliminating the land west of the wastewater treatment plant and north of Twin Cities as mitigation for development impacts in the eastern expanded SOI. In resolution eleven forty-four, LaFco approved the GALT SOI expansion to the east, but excluded the land north of Twin Cities, which was the Delta Greens property. And in resolution eleven forty-three, LaFco certified the nineteen ninety-five GALT SOI expansion EIR. In the EIR, one alternative included was the Delta Greens project, but it was merely an alternative that was eventually discarded. In two thousand and six, GALT representatives appeared before LaFco to discuss the possibility of approving a general plan update that included a SOI increase to take in the Delta Greens site. The hearing was far from a lukewarm response. Several commissioners cited the extensive amount of developable land to the east already in GALT's SOI, and wondering why GALT would consider such a massive land grab. The tape from the LaFco hearing is available off the city clerk's office at my request for anyone interested in hearing the dialogue for themselves. Delta Greens representatives want GALT residents to believe that simply moving forward with Delta Greens, separate from the general plan, is relatively easy. To the contrary, it will set a dangerous precedent for the entire region. Those that think that there is a possibility LaFco will approve the project, separate of the general plan update, want GALT residents to believe that the city stands nothing to lose by trying. Again, to the contrary, giving the green lights, move forward with processing the Delta Greens application, will invalidate the entire general plan process, and send a clear message that GALT cares nothing for the SACOG blueprint process. In two thousand and four, SACOG adopted the preferred scenario map for the City of GALT as part of their blueprint process. Numerous experts in fields like land use and transportation contributed input on the SACOG blueprint. The SACOG blueprint preferred scenarios are the culmination of thousands of hours of extensive work. These scenarios were meant to guide cities as they grew, to ensure that the growth was responsible and would not adversely affect the quality of life for the entire region. Here's what the preferred scenario for GALT until the year twenty fifty was determined to be. You'll notice that the lands that Delta Greens is talking about is not included. If we choose to thumb our noses at the SACOG blueprint process, we could find it harder to acquire transportation funding that is distributed by SACOG. We currently have the honor of having Councilman Darrell Claire serving as vice chairperson of SACOG. Do we want to send such a negative message to a governing board that has shown faith in one of our own elected officials? But enough about LaFco and SACOG, let's look at our general plan update process that the City of GALT is undertaking. GALT's twenty thirty general plan update is a document meant to provide a growth projection until the year twenty thirty. Considerable effort has been put forth in the general plan update process to calculate the mitigation measures necessary to offset growth impacts to traffic, sewer, water, et cetera. These calculations take into account the growth areas outlined in the proposed sphere of influence expansion, which does not include Delta Greens. The current SOI in our new general plan looks like this. You can see it's relatively close to the SACOG blueprint. The document is supposed to include all land deemed as growth areas. Our own general plan documents say this. Every city and county in California must adopt a general plan. A general plan is a legal document that serves as a community's constitution for land use and development. The plan must be comprehensive and long-term, outlining proposals for the physical development of the county or city, and any land outside its boundaries, which, in the planning agency's judgment, bears relation to its planning. That definition, right there, outlines the fact that if GALT were to move forward with Delta Greens while we haven't completed our general plan, we would be invalidating the entire process. By moving forward with Delta Greens, GALT would be sending a message to the entire region that our general plan update does not include lands that council intends to develop, thus invalidating the mitigation measures calculated during the general plan process. Why would the City of GALT want to invalidate their own general plan update process, instead of simply going back and redrawing the boundary lines? Because during the recent election, all candidates for council stated that they would not alter the general plan boundaries until it was adopted, including the two successful candidates. However, less than thirty days after the certification of the two thousand and eight city council election, a plan was conceived to give the Delta Greens group what they wanted, while, in some slight way, keeping a promise to not alter the general plan. If council really intends to develop the Delta Greens project, it should be done in conjunction with, not separate of, the general plan update. Now, I want to make it very clear that I do not support going back and redrawing the boundary lines for the general plan, but it is my strong feeling that if the majority of council members wish to do this, it needs to be in conjunction with the general plan. Taking this step is the only way to ensure that all mitigation measures are accounted for. If council chooses not to include Delta Greens in the general plan update process, the public will have little assurances that Delta Green will adequately offset their own growth burdens. In addition, the likelihood that LaFco would approve our SOI to run consistent with our proposed general plan could diminish. This potential delay could adversely affect the city's ability to sustain itself by putting annexation plans in relation to the Highway ninety-nine corridor and the notch area on hold. If council chooses to go forward with Delta Greens, separate of the general plan, I would suggest that we send a representative before LaFco, their official board members, to hear what delays this project could cause our general plan update. That way, the entire council and the community will know for sure what could happen, if anything. Simply saying that GALT wants to develop the Delta Greens project will not make it happen. And when Delta Green supporters on the council and in the community claim to be working with the backing of a majority of GALT residents, please remember this. When politicians claim to be operating, this is a quote, "on behalf of a mandate from the people, the mandate at very least requires scrutiny, if not outright skepticism." This is a quote from my fellow councilwoman, Barbara Payne, in her Sacramento Bee editorial in January of last year. "We all have strong opinions about this project, but rushing into an agreement with Delta Greens will only further divide this council and the community. In the last year, the supporters of Delta Greens have orchestrated a public campaign of misinformation that has divided the community. The effects of this division are already resonating at the council level. Let's all respect our differences and make the most informed decision possible." Thank you.
Sorry, Liz. I guess someone's going to handle it for you over there. Okay. And, uh, next item, Delta Greens development process, staff?
I'll turn it over to Jason to explain what took place with he and Kurt, and then I want the attorney to say a few words.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I wanted to present a report on the meeting we held with representatives from the Delta Greens project. Number of city staff, Councilman Vice Mayor Barbara Payne, members from the Delta Greens project met on December twenty-third at the request of council following the December sixteenth meeting, to discuss with the Delta Greens project the process that may be involved in order to, to process a development application for that site. The Delta Greens representatives put forth some information about the vision for their project, and the steps and processes they were involved with, including the next step that they envisioned for themselves, which was to identify a developer for the project. We had some discussion about the likely steps that would be undertaken with the city, as far as studies and EIRs, and the process through LaFco, and things of that nature. One of the things that was recommended by staff, which is very common in situations such as this, is the development of a pre-annexation. Can everyone in the back hear what Jason's saying? Basically, the, is that better? All right. Turn up, turn up the volume. Basically, one of the first recommendations from staff, which is common when a large-scale development such as this comes forward, is seeking some sort of annexation, is developed, what's termed a pre-annexation agreement. We have not had a large annexation in the city for quite some time. I think the last one, way before my time, Kurt was involved with this on the east side of the city. Pre-annexation agreements are very common now, and in most agencies considering large-scale annexation. Basically, it is not an entitlement in any sort, it's, and it's setting forth a process of developing the application, doing the reports and studies. It sets forth payment requirements from the applicant, as far as, you know, they're paying for staff time, attorney's fees, all the necessary studies, and things of that sort. I'd like the city attorney maybe to just take a second to describe a little bit more in depth about what a pre-annexation agreement is and is not, because it seems like there's some confusion among members of the, in the public, and perhaps among the council as well. So I think it would be beneficial to hear from the city attorney on that.
Just to emphasize one of the points Jason just made, I think it's important to understand first what a pre-annexation agreement is not. And what it is not, is it is not a preapproval in any sense of the word of a project. It does not mean that the project will ultimately be annexed. It does not commit the, the city or the council to ultimately approve any aspect of the project. What it is designed to do is to make it very clear as between the city and the applicant right from the get-go, what the process is going to be, what kind of studies are going to be required by the city, what kind of information is going to be required by the city, and to set up a mechanism for funding all of the costs associated with staff review and processing of that application. And in particular, the mechanism that is typically found in pre-annexation agreements is that the applicant fronts a certain amount of money, and staff and consultants work off of that deposited amount of money, and it is replenished on a periodic basis to ensure that the developer is always paying the freight for evaluating the project. The best way to ensure that the applicant is bound to that funding mechanism, and is required to, to pay those fees, is to enter into an agreement. Because if we have that agreement, then to the extent that the applicant reneges on its requirement to pay for city costs, then we have an agreement that we can enforce to recover city fees. I have an example actually in another jurisdiction right now, where the agency spent the original retainer of the developer, did not have an agreement, and then continued to process it, the application, without an agreement or, or funds on deposit. And they're now in a position where they're looking to recover a hundred thousand dollars without an agreement. So that's the, the critical purpose that a pre-annexation agreement would serve. The other point is, when you're, when you're dealing with an agreement, or with a project of this complexity, it requires an analysis that goes beyond what we would typically envision for land use development. And so, this agreement sets forth the type of studies that will be required, so that there's no misunderstanding as we move ahead from the developer as to the level of analysis that city staff will be requiring.
In addition to that, let me just make this comment. The letter that you have before you in no way shows support one way or another for any project. All the-
All it indicates is that the staff would be more than happy to work with those individuals to answer any questions and try and clarify the process as we proceed.
Yeah, and that's, I'll just, I'll just finish briefly, which is basically like Ted mentioned, the letter that was requested by the developer is simply, uh, a, um, indication from the city, the staff, the council, as far as the process that would ensue on the development application, the development of a pre-annexation agreement. Their intent is to take the letter and to, uh, interview and select a developer that would, and that developer then would then come back to the city and negotiate a pre-annexation agreement, which would then come back to the city council for review and approval.
Any comments from the council?
Yeah, if I could, um, the reason I think this is a good way to proceed is, has been defined already in the comments made, but also to address many of the concerns we've heard tonight and at other meetings, concerns like how do we know what they're going to pay for, or that they'll pay for it at all, or that they should pay for it. This document answers all of those questions that you asked. Without it, we wouldn't be able to answer your question. We don't know how it would get paid for, because there's no legal binding document in place. On a motion earlier tonight on the checks that the council approves at every city council meeting, we approved to write a check for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to PZ Partners who had proposed to put a shopping center across the road from us, across the highway. Well, they aren't proceeding with that project, so they got their money back. But when they talked about building something there and to someone who asked, is this done? They had to deposit hundreds of thousands of dollars with us for the exact same things this is, same things Walmart's doing, the same anybody else does, and they didn't move forward with their project, so they get their money back. But it's defined, we know how much money they get back, we know how much of their money was spent, and this is doing the same thing. What I've been concerned about, and, and this is probably the most controversial topic that has come before the council and, and comes back, obviously, the council, from the get-go and tonight, just by some of the people I see in the audience, Mike Eaton and Jude Lamar and others, those folks usually show up to debate the merits of a project, although I'm sure they're here hoping not to even move this forward, because if this doesn't go forward, there isn't a project to debate. My problem has been, we always want to get to the merit to the project before we even know what the project is. And as I said at the last council meeting, I don't support interrupting the general plan, but I do support allowing these people, just as we allow anyone else, to propose something to us. We haven't seen the proposal yet. This is just to put the process in place and to collect the money so that we can tell you, yes, they are paying for it. Not you, not us, these people are paying for the process. So, um, I, I have some comments when we get to the details about the letter that's being asked to put forward, because again, the letter shouldn't, as we said, imply anything that it isn't implying. We aren't in any way approving the proposal, because we've never seen it, and we shouldn't see it until, and I know we have one member here, until it goes to the bodies like our planning commission before it comes to us. These things, anytime you get this process upside down, which this one's gotten off to a rough start, we're already talking about it like it's a project proposed before the council for approval or denial. It's nowhere even close to that, any more than Walmart. Those of you who are here for the Walmart meeting, spoke to all the problems Walmart causes or all the, all the services they provide, that wasn't the topic. The only topic was, are they going to proceed with the process? And as Andrew just read, they are proceeding with the process. We have agreements in place, and one agreement has already been achieved that I think makes some people happier, and that has to do with it, they won't be a twenty-four hour operation. When the project will actually reach us, I suspect is still six, nine months away, maybe a year, and then we will talk about the project itself, because all the questions we want answers to will have to be addressed. All the public comment will have to be answered by them, that's their requirement. If somebody says, you're going to cause too much traffic on Twin Cities, they're going to have to answer how they're going to deal with that. So I would ask staff, council, and the community, I mean, tonight, isn't it a night to talk about the merits of what you believe the project will look like, any more than what we believe it'll look like? It is to talk about, is there a letter that would be sent that says, you'll be allowed to bring a project to us and you'll be allowed to pay for the cost of that? That's, that's all that I know we're here to talk about, and I hope we can keep the process in its proper order, because much like Walmart, by our taking certain conversations to a certain level, we all got those emails and phone calls, we left a lot of the community believing that an action we took about five months ago was to approve Walmart. I'm still hearing people say, when are you going to build the Walmart you approved? Or I hear from people saying, I still can't believe you approved the Walmart. And we never have, but we talked so much about all the aspects of the Walmart, they believed that's where we were in the process. Andrew, I think you did a great presentation, and I agree with pretty much everything you put up there. Obviously, this has to be approved by a lot of agencies, LAFCO, SAFCO, the Air District, I mean, there's enormous ones, Planning Commission, City Council, it goes on and on and on. That's not what we're doing tonight either. I, I don't know if we'll ever do it. And Jason and Kurt, probably better than anyone, will know, we have sat with people, and one I'm thinking of and you'll be thinking of shortly, who brought a proposed project to us in meetings like this that sounded fantastic. I was behind, up to the point we found out they weren't for real, I was behind what they said they were going to do as a concept, and we reached this exact same position with them. We had talked to LAFCO, we got Donatoli involved, because there was an opportunity for some county involvement, and then we said to them, now's time for you to put in writing and to write checks for real consideration, and we never heard from them again.
He's in prison.
And, I didn't know he's in prison, but, but this is where we are in the process, and, and this is how it should proceed. And if they ever deposit the money and if they ever come up with a project, everybody's going to get to see it, and then we can debate, good, bad, or indifferent. And I, you know, I think it's pretty easy to say, half the room here tonight wants something like it, half the room here tonight doesn't want anything like it, half of Galt wants something like it, half of Galt doesn't want anything like it. I mean, we all know the history of this, as was presented, but again, we aren't deciding that tonight. We are simply going to try and put in an orderly fashion that they will pay for, how they will approach us, they may never approach us, but we're going to make them do it through the proper process that anybody else would need to do. This isn't particularly any different than what was proposed by Perry Herrera, those of you who remember him and YCH communities, but it never got there. They put things in writing, they did get through part of the process with our school district, and if you recall, they put in writing and were prepared, prepared to pay up to five million dollars of funding if certain things occurred. That was the agreement. Those certain things never occurred, therefore they never had to pay the money. I assume they still own the land, although we haven't heard from them, and we were moving in a similar path with Pacific Union Homes for the notch. So this is just the process. But again, for those of us, I know there's strong emotions, I hope we're not going to get into a three-hour debate on where the golf course would or wouldn't be, or whether the Swanson Hawks would or wouldn't be affected. We know those issues have to eventually be addressed if we ever get there.
Well, I don't know where we got off point, but somewhere along the way, I mean, we haven't even seen the Delta Greens project, so we really can't comment on the project itself. But let's say, for example, the, uh, Del Webb project, it was an excellent project. The issue is not the project or projects that could go there. For me, it's not been that, necessarily been the issue. The issue has been the location and the impact it would have on the community. It doesn't matter to me whether this is a Del Webb project, which I thought was an excellent project, it was the location. Uh, Delta Greens could very well be an excellent, excellent project, I'd love to have to the community. Once again, we're getting down to location. It's the impact, it's the location that it's had and the impact that it's going to have on this community in years to come. This is not something we can decide to do, and once you do it, you can't change your mind, because once you move forward on this project, any impacts it has on the sewer plant down the road, twenty, might be ten, fifteen, twenty years, on the roads and other areas of our community, you can't go back and say, gee, we shouldn't have done that. There was a gentleman that was here, um, when we were debating this issue once before, and he said, uh, when they first proposed to build this wastewater treatment plant, he came to the meetings and he was told and assured by the council at that time that once they built that wastewater treatment plant, they would never see their fees increase, they would never have any problems, there'd be no more impact on the community, but that wasn't the case. And he was very upset, and rightfully so, in his statement. We can't guarantee what's going to come down the road. That wastewater treatment plant is very vital to us, and we do not know what upgrades or expectations that the state is going to have on us as a community or any other community. And there's other issues here that, that are impacting this. I haven't heard anything that would tell me that any project that would go in here would be good, not one change. Now, this is, you know, I mean, two days meeting before Christmas, we, I mean, uh, the new council hasn't even gotten a seat for it, but we've moved forward on this project. I mean, that's got to tell you something. Two days before Christmas, you've got, uh, a political action committee that at one point was wanting to recall myself and Mr. Meredith, and at the same time, they're pushing this project, but they're meeting with staff and, and these landowners in order to move this project forward, two days before Christmas. Here we are, three meetings into the year or into this, uh, council, and, uh, we're already, here we are, we're already talking about, we got to get this project done, we got to get it done. Uh, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. I personally, as far as the letter goes, if you're going to send this letter, and I'm sure you will, uh, it won't be with my blessing, I can't, I can't support that. It, it has nothing to do with the project. Uh, again, it's, it doesn't matter if it's just project or any other. The area, the location is just not good, and you're talking about an island project here, because once you build it out there, the rest of the city's going to be separate from it. So, I mean, I could go over, if, if somebody wants to hear me rehash my concerns, I can do that. You've got the railroad tracks, you've got your rifle range out there, um, you know, you've got the sewer plant, you know, you've got Twin Cities which hasn't, uh, developed, you've got the overpass, uh, that is fifteen, twenty years away from being developed. I mean, we can go over all that again. It's not going to change anything. Um, what saddens me more than anything is that this one issue has divided us as a community. We're all here neighbors, we work together, we eat at the same restaurant, some of us, and, uh, we're angry at each other because either one side wants and one side doesn't want it. I don't see the, the landowners here, I don't see them here fighting for this project, okay? But when they leave, when it's all done and said, regardless of how it comes out, we're the ones who have to live with it, and we also have to deal with the, the bitterness and the anger, and a lot of that doesn't go away. Some people will never let go of that. And I think it's sad that especially in this economy that we have, that we haven't seen in seventy years, with this major impact, we should be working together to help each other out, to develop and to, and to build what we can with what we have. Uh, this project here is years away, if it could even ever be built, uh, I mean, there's a long process. It's not going to help us in our current situation, I don't care what anybody says. This project will not be built in the next five or ten years, it's not going to happen. So, uh, again, it's not the project in itself, it's the location. I have not been given any information that's indicated that, to me, that any project would be worth building there. Um, and to send a letter indicating, suggesting that, you know, we'd be interested in exploring it, uh, a project of any type without, you know, some sort of information that would, uh, overcome those issues I've mentioned already and, among others, um, I, I wouldn't, I would not recommend moving forward on that. I, I just can't support that.
Why not wait for you have a developer to send a letter?
Any other comments?
I just had a question I wanted to ask staff before we get to the public comment. We already had a speaker get up tonight and question why we had members of a political action committee meeting with staff in regards to this process. And I'm curious from the attorney's standpoint, is this something that typically happens in association with a development project like this?
I'm sorry, what, what's your question again, uh, councilmember?
My question is, the staff report clearly indicates that we had three members of a political action committee that came in and met with staff in regards to this project, almost like formal representatives, and I'm curious to know what type of precedent there is for that.
I don't, um, I don't know whether there's, there's precedent for or against it. Um, you know, from staff's perspective, um, uh, staff did not control, at least at this meeting, who, who attended this particular meeting. Um, if this proj, if this project proceeds forward in the processing, then it would be staff's recommendation at, uh, at future meetings that the meeting be restricted exclusively to, uh, the project applicants and staff and, uh, that, uh, persons outside of those two categories not be, not participate. So I don't know if that, if that answers your question.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Councilman, I think the question would probably be more appropriate to them, because they choose who they bring to the meeting. All staff was told was to meet with the people that had the project and try and answer the questions.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment?
Yeah.
We have, we have public comment, too.
Well, I was just going to comment that, uh, my feeling about this meeting was it was just such a, um, oh, kind of gathering of thoughts meeting. I didn't, uh, feel that it was a formal meeting, it was sort of a preliminary meeting, and I would imagine in the future, when it gets down to, uh, details and further along, that it would be restricted to those interested in the process that was, that was going to be followed. Um, that was my only comment was regarding the meeting and who would attend in the future and kind of the feeling of the whole meeting, it was, uh, I'd say, I wouldn't say it was a brainstorming, but it was kind of coming to, uh, an understanding as to the position that the city would take and what this was about, which was to simply, uh, clarify, and I think Councilwoman Claire did a very good job, that this is about allowing a project to go through a process just like any other project would. Um, and it might, it might happen, it might not happen, but there's always a lot of, of forethought or people that believe that it will or will not happen, and the only way we're ever going to know is to let it run its course. And of course, we want to protect the city as far as money that's being spent and that type of thing. That would be my comment.
Okay. We have a public comment? Is there six or seven people?
Judith Lamar?
We have public comment, and then we will come back and the council will make a decision one way or the other. You'll just hold your thoughts, sir.
Mayor Shelton, members of the council, I'm Judith Lamar. Thank you for this opportunity to talk tonight about the proposed pre-annexation agreement. I'm president of Friends of the Swanson Hawk, and prior to that time, I was the leader for the local Sierra Club and have been here and met with people from Galt over the last fifteen years about this area that is north and west of the current city, and I participated in the general plan update. I oppose the pre-annexation agreement which commits the city to process an application for a development that is outside the general plan. Uh, this is a pay-to-play agreement, everybody does it, but it sends the message that if you pay us, then we'll play with you and you can develop, uh, in or around our city. And although you don't make your final decisions till all the documents are done, I think there is clearly evidence on record that the big issues have been well studied, and there are unusual barriers for this project, barriers that don't exist for projects that are within your city limits and where you would normally have, you know, an agreement for payments, as you were describing, Councilmember Claire. This is, um, I think it's really important to remind the city and the council that studies were done on this location in nineteen ninety-four and an EIR was adopted. That EIR was referred to by, um, Councilmember Meredith. I'm going to pass you a copy of a letter that was submitted by our legal council to a former mayor here a couple of years ago detailing the specifics of what Councilmember Meredith, uh, mentioned in his PowerPoint presentation about the specific mitigation measures in your last SOI, which was, uh, a mitigation for the environmental impact of expanding your city the last time around, and specifically refers to the exclusion of the areas west and north of the city from the SOI as mitigation. of the areas west and north of the city from the SOI as mitigation. This is no normal barrier to development. This is a major environmental issue and a major barrier. So, I do endorse Councilmember Meredith's history, and just providing a little more additional documentation on that. And I agree with Councilmember Haynes's comment that this is about location. It's not about the specifics of the project. It's not about assessing what this urban footprint will do. We know what it will do because of that was studied in nineteen ninety-four, and the studies have been done. You don't need to do them again. I doubt you'll get a different, you're not going to get a different answer. So, this is a controversial project for a very big reason. And since I spoke to you last, there have been additional reasons why this is not a good place to grow Galt. And so, I just prepared a few comments on that and appended our previous fact sheet, which was written up in two thousand four and sort of lays out, you know, more of the same about the location. What is really new is that this location, building and this urbanizing, stretching the city out to this location, now would violate the blueprint, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, and our air quality plan, which is a regional document, that we make our promises to the federal government. And so, there is even more of an environmental impact from moving your city into this area than would have happened two or three years ago. So, I just want to mention in this context that the Attorney General has become very concerned about the greenhouse gas emissions, profiles of cities, and the climate change planning that they need to be doing to offset and mitigate future growth on greenhouse gas emissions. And the Attorney General has been asking all the cities and the counties to plan well for, for climate change and reducing greenhouse gas. And this project is completely inconsistent with the region's plan to reduce greenhouse gas, which, you know, I already heard about how this project makes the new general plan a sham. I won't repeat that. And I'm just going to refer to the substantial evidence on hand that the environmental impacts of urbanizing in this location are well-known, and you don't need to spend money to study them. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jim Paschal. I am attorney representing Friends of the Swenson Hawk. This evening, I'm going to discuss a few points regarding the draft letter that is proposed to be sent, assuming the majority votes to send, to send that letter. The staff report states the following, that Mr. Bardelson, who is the landowner's real estate broker, indicated that in order for a developer to invest in the project, it would be necessary to have some indication from the city of the process and consensus from the council that there was support to begin the entitlement process. And Mr. Slankert has much said that this evening as well, that, that an investor or developer would like to hear that there is consensus to begin the entitlement process. Now, maybe there will be consensus. Maybe it will be unanimous vote to send this letter out the way that it is, but I've heard a rumor that it might not be unanimous. I've heard a story, it might even be a split vote or a three to two, which if it is, certainly is not any sort of consensus. Now, the, if the letter is, if the council approved the letter, it would appear that the project proponent will be going out and trying to persuade various investors and developers to spend a bunch of money to process this application. In all likelihood, this letter will be a part of the, I hate to use the word "sales" package, but that's what's going to be happening. And a readout of this letter, it has the sentence, "In response to the authorization provided by the city council in their meeting, the city staff welcomed the opportunity to assist in the filing review and process of this development project." Doesn't say "application", it says "project." Now, that's not a statement that there is consensus of the council behind it, but arguably, somebody could look at that and interpret it to mean that, yeah, the council's for the project. So, if it is in fact a split vote, it would be a whole lot more honest to simply state what that vote is in this letter, so that the potential developers or investors know just how much support there is or is not for the application project at this time. A three to two is not a consensus, and any potential developer thinking of investing in the project certainly should be aware of that. And I would think the city should disclose it in the letter, since we know the letter's going to be part of some, of some sort of sales package. The letter should also state that there are no assurances that the council will, at the end of the process, approve the annexation and project. There aren't. There aren't any assurances, but applicants need to be told that, because sometimes they don't necessarily believe that. And the letter should disclose that an independent approval from LAFCO is needed, and that LAFCO has discretion to say yea or nay. And if the, you really want the letter to be honest, you would also disclose that the community has been deeply divided over projects in this location for years. And again, that's something a potential investor or developer should know about. And now, if they knew, knew Galt City politics, sure, they'd know all about this, but there may be people approached who, or who consider this, who aren't aware of the history on this. And if they get into this and find out they're in the middle of a catfight that's been going on for fifteen years and nobody told them, they may be a little unhappy, perhaps the city, for not disclosing, you know, the rather unusual circumstances surrounding approval or disapproval of this project. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Timdahl? After Mr. Timdahl Al Baldwin? After Ms.
My name's Dan Timdahl. I'm a resident in Galt, and I thank you all for the opportunity to address you. It was of interest to me that this project was to be located where it was, and I took the time to go up there and look at the site. I, I've had family members living in Galt since the nineteen forties, since the Second World War. So, I've always had sort of vested interest, although I have only lived here a short time myself. And in seeing this, this location, I don't have any axe to grind, but it is situated in a place where the Galt City Sewer Farm is, and it's a noisesome development. An active railroad track is very close to it. I live within hearing distance of that track. And there's the nine fifteen PM, the ten forty-three, the eleven fifty-six, the one oh seven AM, the three twenty-six, the four fifty-four, and at least one more train before eight AM. I understand this is to be developed for a senior retirement-type occupation. And if I was ill and old, I don't think I would care to live in such a noisy and possibly noisesome environment, especially if I was perpetually housebound and did not have the luxury of vacating the premises most of the day. Now, my concern is that in the location considered, it could be a serious liability to our city. And that's my total consideration. If they had another location, it might be very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Baldwin and Tom Hewer, after Al Baldwin? Okay. Mike, do you want to go after Ms.?
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and I'm not either for or against this project. I wanted to tell you that this is a little research I did, and what we're doing is like deja vu. In October of two thousand five, Claire indicated that there were two purposes for this meeting, very similar to the last meeting we had. Information and presentation from the Dell Webb, and two, questions from the community. He stated that the only action that the council might consider, or was considering, was directing staff to set up a meeting with Dell Webb to discuss moving the project application toward consideration by council. Very similar to what we did, or you did, in two thousand five. Claire asked for comments and questions from council. Sheldon had none. Payne asked how Dell Webb would, had assisted with the wastewater treatment plant in Lincoln. Mark, forgive me about the name, but Mark Kloschhagen of Dell Webb gave an overview of the process. Malsen had questions about various aspects of the project, but felt those would be answered if the, when the project progressed. He indicated that he had heard no negative responses from the community. Reboi had no questions. Claire indicated that he had interest in learning more about the project, mainly because it would impact, it would not impact the school system. Lynn Renesso, he endorsed the Dell Webb project. Barbara Smith, board member of the Galt Chamber in Commerce and the Economic Developing Task Force, said the Chamber and Task Force urged the council to pursue the project. Jim Paschal, Sacramento citizen, expressed his concern about the Swanson Hawk issue and opposed the project. Galan Kawani, resident of Galt, supported the project. Joyce Redenbaum, Galt area resident, supported the project. John Slaughterback, now, he comes up here a lot, which is good. Galt citizens said the project sounded good, but was concerned about the wastewater treatment plant. Jerry Stripling, Galt area resident, was opposed to the project. Dick Johnson, Galt area resident, supported the project. Jay Long supported the project. Claire then pointed out that the council and planning commission, Hosfield, said to go forward with the studies. Powers said it should be looked into. McFadden thanked Dell Webb for the presentation and wished them well with the project. Hewer had no comments, and she's here tonight. Santillian, and he's here tonight, also thanked Dell Webb for the presentation. He expressed concern about the traffic issues, but felt the city should move forward on the project. Reboi said this project should be included in the general plan process, just like any other project that the city was considering on the east side of Galt. Malsen suggested that the city should wait for the general plan update study, which would be available in one month. Payne said they should move forward. Now, I'm going to do this quickly, because I've got two minutes. This happened in January thirtieth of two thousand six. And by the way, all this went by the wayside when the new council came in. It was on the way and it was on the process, but then the majority changed, and it was taken out.
I'm sorry, what year was that?
Uh, two thou, January thirtieth, two thousand six. This was after that, when you came in later.
We came in in January two thousand and seven.
Right. This was, this was before that.
Okay.
Okay. Gail Hall said she thought the meeting was to discuss alternatives. Al Baldwin, that's me, said he thought the city should expand the sphere, but zone it properly. Mike Eden, which is here tonight, which is really great, Nature Conservancy questioned whether LAFCO would allow an overbounded sphere and said the county was requiring the same mitigation for agricultural and residential subdivision areas as required for conventional subdivisions in regard to the loose agricultural land and habitat. He said until the city was in the EIR process, they would not have all the facts. He clarified that. He did not say Galt should not grow, but needed to balance revenue to cost. He supported the efficient growth. I'm going to jump down, because I've only got seconds. Joyce Redenbaum said there were, there was a misstatement regarding LAFCO denying an annexation. She said they approved the Galt Sphere of Influence proposal, but it took two votes to verify the LAFCO decision. She said Mike Eden threatened to sue, so LAFCO delayed their decision. She said the owner pulled the request from LAFCO. She requested that the consultants make the corrections in the study. I think I almost got it. So, I just wanted to bring up some history on this thing here, and I don't know how well I did it, but I, it's, was quick, and it was to the point, I hope. And I hope it gives you a little more understanding and, for what's going to happen in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Mike Eaton?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I simply want to present and respond to any questions you might have, the response that I prepared to the Delta Greens' presentation on December sixteenth. I apologize that I was out of town and wasn't able to be there, and I have some extra copies for the audience who may not have received one. I did try to get it out in advance.
And Mike, if I could, and you may already know, but I did let people know that you'd emailed me and told them.
Watched the tape. I appreciate that.
Okay.
And so, I'm concerned that if, if history is important to where we stand today, and truly it was to Mr. Slankert, because he emphasized it repeatedly in his presentation, that you get the history correct. And I identified five areas of contention, and I'll just summarize them here. In the presentation, the Delta Greens' representative repeatedly referred to contributions of land to the Nature Conservancy, land contributed and assigned to the Nature Conservancy, being considered as mitigation for the Delta Greens' project. Nature Conservancy accepts fourteen hundred and forty-three acres of mitigation land. Delta Green contribution of fourteen forty-three acres enhanced the forty-seven thousand acres, because Summerville preserved. Those are all the direct quotes from the slides. The fact is that there was no contribution, and in fact, the Nature Conservancy never received the property. Nature Conservancy arranged for a appraisal for market value, arranged for the funding, and arranged for the transfer of the property directly from the De Nier Whaley family to the Department of Fish and Game. There are no mitigation values then or now associated with that transaction, and all parties were aware of that at the time. Assertion number two, quote, "The agreement consists of the Nature Conservancy receiving land in turn for not opposing the project. Nature Conservancy agrees to maintain a neutral stance regarding Delta Greens as a condition of acquiring the land." The fact there is that Nature Conservancy, where I was then employed, was asked to support the project as a condition of the sale. When we refused to do that, the developer proposed language that we, that I include here, which we accepted as a part of the option agreement. Assertion number three, LAFCO has already expressed their intent to approve the Delta Greens' annexation. I think I'll pass over that, because I think Andrew got that right correctly, as did Jude. Assertion number four, LAFCO certifies EIR for the sphere that included the Delta Greens' property as phase two. That's simply incorrect. Again, Andrew walked through the resolutions, and, and I believe accurately represented the history there. And finally, this covers ground that Jude covered as well, the quote that there is no reason to believe LAFCO would oppose the annexation of the Delta Greens' project to the city of Galt, I think is flat-out false. Of course, it's difficult to predict what any pointed body will do over the course of reviewing a project, but there's a large weight of LAFCO law and policy. Law and policy that has been refined in the direction of increased sensitivity to growth patterns since this project was originally heard by LAFCO that stands against it. In addition, as Jude mentioned, the blueprint and the region's accelerating efforts to demonstrate a serious response to the challenge of climate are going to weigh fairly significantly with LAFCO. So, I'd just be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Hewer and Tom?
Hi, my name's Lori Hewer. I've lived in the city of Galt for twenty-two years, and I'm actually coming to speak as a former planning commissioner. I just finished my four years on the planning commission, in which countless hours and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on a general plan update that needs to be respected. And I have the same concerns as Councilman Meredith, that this project jeopardizes that general plan update, and that really, when that planning commission passed that general plan on at a five-oh vote, represented by each council member on represented by each council member on the council at that time, that we have a school district waiting for annexation, we have a park waiting to be annexed, and that we would put a development in the area of Delta Greens on some sort of path that could jeopardize that. And I don't think just could, I think it will jeopardize it. I also think that, as a taxpayer, it makes me very angry to know that, one, serving on the, you know, any time you serve as an elected official or an appointed body, and I spent four years on the school board, in which the city assured us that we would not have difficulty annexing that land. Ten years later, that land is still not annexed. And then, as a planning commissioner, to know that I attended meeting after meeting in which I had to take my, I had to take time off from work, volunteering, giving my time, putting my input, trying to do what I thought was responsible for the City of Galt. And when Councilman Shelton and Councilman Payne were re-elected in this election cycle, you know, I think that that's great, that citizens speak, I think we have to respect that. But I also think that we, you show a lot of disrespect to the community at the very first meeting. You put something like this on the agenda, knowing, full well knowing, what it could do to the general plan update. And the general plan update has taken far longer for this community than it should've taken. And there's a lot of developers in this community and landowners that would like to see their land developed also, that would like to see it move forward. And by jeopardizing that general plan update, you also then cost them money, and you make it more difficult for them also. My other issue is that I see on the agenda tonight, a decision to, an item in which you want to bring back a committee, Mayor Shelton, that was made up of developers and council members and businesses. And actually, to tell you, I was really glad when that committee went away a couple of years ago, because I think it was some more of that backdoor politics. Things need to be out in the open. City business needs to be handled under the scrutiny of the citizens. The citizens need to be able to know what's going on. When we start all these little backdoor committees that are closed to the general public, that there's no minutes taken, that there's nothing provided to the community, we're back again into the backdoor politics, which actually was my problem when Mayor Shelton was on the council before. We're obviously bringing that back and thinking that that's okay. So, since the general plan was passed on a 5-0 onto the council, I really agree with Councilman Claire, that anything that jeopardizes the general plan and all of the money and time that's been spent on that should not be pushed forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Stewart?
Thank you, Laura. I'm sitting too long. I can't believe we're having this discussion. What with the state of the housing and the current economy, businesses collapsing, home foreclosures, tight credit, this is the worst economy we've had in, in, in memory. And it's due to its sheer global nature. It's not going to end anytime soon. I've watched Galt development, both on the west side, where I live, and on the east side. All this development, and we gain Aurelius. City coffers don't seem to be doing any better. We've had to raise taxes to pay for more policemen. Now, we have to pay higher city fees for further growth. As LAFCO aptly put it, Galt is joining the tax dollar chase of every big city in, in Nobody has achieved sufficiency. LA was once a small city. Why would anyone believe another development is going to rescue us? But this isn't what it's all, it's all about. I witnessed here an overly optimistic, though blatantly error-ridden, presentation for the Delta Greens. I couldn't believe what I was hearing. Mayor Shelton and Councilwoman Payne were going to let it pass as factual. Thankfully, Councilmen, Councilmembers Meredith and Haynes questioned what to anyone else was a fairy tale. And I agree with Darrell. I mean, yeah, we shouldn't be talking about the merits of a project before, you know, applications or whatever. However, by this presentation, that's exactly what we've done. We allowed the merits of this project by the proponents be presented, and it was totally false. And I think this creates a momentum for this project, so clear decision-making, I don't think can be made with that momentum. If Mayor Shelton and Councilmember Payne's support for this project is based on the stuff of that presentation, then they have been duped and don't represent me or many other Galt citizens. There are a number of people that have been duped by this as well. And that's why I say, a lot of the, a lot of things have been said about Delta Greens, and everybody's jacked up, and I think it's based on a lot of misinformation being presented. Those who stand to gain money from this deals will tell you anything. I was in this chamber when Councilmember Marion Lawrence stated, her displeasure, that developers on the west side failed to, failed the community by not allowing parks in their developments. The Quail Hollow representative looked at her in the eye and said, "You will have your park." None wherever included. You can get told anything, but it doesn't guarantee you're gonna have anything. That is what this is about, money and effort for the personal gain of a few. I hope Councilman Claire is true to his word, that he will not approve anything that delays approving the general plan, which would prove costly to the people of Galt. Any future plans being presented before this council need to be reviewed by all. As Orville Fletcher has said here in the past, all issues need to be opened for all to review. I consider Councilmember Meredith and Haynes to be my representative on this council, since they can see through obvious scams, and I don't want any council members censured by someone who can't recognize that they're being taken for a ride. It's too irresponsible for the city. These are extremely sensitive environmental lands that we are talking about, and are a local asset. One of the most successful projects in Galt is the Sand Hill Crane Festival. Natural habitats are a boon to local economies, and people have, people love them, and they will come from miles away to, to see them and participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from staff or council?
We have one over there.
I'm sorry.
Jerry?
Sorry, Jerry, I was told there were no other speakers. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you for letting me come in up. My name is Jerry Stripling. I've been a resident of Galt all my life, 62 years. I've watched a lot of things happen in Galt. I am definitely opposed to Dell Webb, Delta Green, or whatever you guys would like to call it. I have sat back and watched, I believe, there's political money that's been contributed to the decisions being made on this. I think it's a bad deal. I do not, what you're looking at is the, your sewer system is basically, I don't, I hate to call it the heart of Galt, but it is, basically. It, it controls, if, if you were to box your sewer plant in, people might laugh, but I'll tell you what, it is. People, you know, if you're to box a sewer plant in, you have no control of what this town's gonna be able to do. They can't get rid of their water. If you go to the streams, they can cut you off at any time. Back in 1990, the Water Quality Control Board was thinking about cutting people off all the way going into Lugada Creek. What you're doing right now is basically putting a carrot in front of this deal. And I think it needs to be stopped right now. I don't feel you need to go any further. If you box a sewer plant in, you've lost the control of Galt on your destiny of what you can do in the future. It probably won't affect me, but it'll affect the kids down the line. You're gonna put a burden on them, and they'll probably move out of town. You'll have some move in from the Bay Area into these houses. Very few of your locals will be in them. You will bring a senior development in there with probably forty, forty-five hundred, maybe 5,000 people, with the same idea. They will control a lot of your politics with that big of a group out there. It's a possibility. I just don't feel you need to give any blessings to this at all. We've watched it come and go quite a few times. I think it should definitely be stopped now. Mrs. Dodge has invested money, so has Mike Gattreach. That was a gamble. That's all it is. They're developers, basically. They're gambling on what the future of Galt's gonna do. Well, I'm gambling on you won't get this project through. I was here a while back, and I've got probably fif- ten to fifteen years of service out there in the sewer plant. I used to run cattle out there. I used to irrigate. I was told, last time I was up here, by Mr. Baldwin, that, that the sewer plant don't stink. Boy, I'll tell you what, it's amazing. I sit out there and watch the, oh, I've irrigated about every twelve days, you go back to the same valves, same irrigation line. It is probably three feet under the ground at 110 degrees. We had fish that were in the line, which is mosquito fish, you're gonna have them. And we had the other stuff that comes from Galt in the line. I opened up the valve at the end, and I liked to puke. I'm just sorry that maybe his nose is not as good as mine, but it was, it was tough. It stunk. And we're right there. This, this project shares the same fence line. We don't need to talk about it's 2,000 feet away from the head gate. It's shape, it's right on the, the line. This project basically just needs to be stopped. It's a good project, but it's a wrong place, is all it is. If it was up at Rancho Seco, it'd be perfect. Or somewhere in between here or there, if they could find another location. But, my opinion, and my opinion will never change. We do not need Delta Green out there. And I wish to thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from staff or council?
Yeah, I haven't. As I said, I support allowing a process to take place, a process that's defined, a process that assures who's paying for what. And just as with the Dell Webb, I can remember sitting here and being told by many people here tonight that it was already a done deal, it was gonna be built, it was bought and paid for by elections to city officials. Obviously, it's not there. Obviously, that never happens. We've already heard that this project's been bought and paid for by contributions to officials. It's a done deal. I wasn't here when it happened 15 years ago, but I bet the same things were said back then. It's been bought and paid for, the developers have already got the council in their pocket, and it's gonna happen, and obviously, that didn't happen either. So, some people feel that way about, as I said, all sorts of other projects. We could go on and on tonight about Jerry's concerns about whether it does or doesn't smell. We can go on about all those things, 'cause we may someday go on about all those, but tonight's not that night. So, I'm not gonna get into all my rebuttals to some of those concerns. I do support allowing a process for this or any other project to be defined. To that end, I do have some thoughts about the language, and I have two comments given to me by Larry Green. As you know, I represent our city on the air board. This project has concerns at the air district, it'll have to be met. I also represent our city at SECOG. This project has concerns at SECOG, it'll have to be addressed, if it ever reaches that point. But, in the letter we're gonna put forth, we should not imply anything in the letter that the letter's not intended to represent. And so, I agree with the two comments that I'll give to consideration that were put forth by Larry Green, and they read as this, and if you have in front of you the document or the letter, it'll be easier to follow along. In the first paragraph, it states after December 16th, 2008, the wording, the requested, should be changed to read something like, "As with all proposed projects," obviously, so that we aren't implying this one's getting any other special treatment, "as with all proposed projects, both inside and outside of the urban boundary, the city staff will assist," and then the rest is fine. So, the next person who shows up with a similar request, there was concerns about if we're setting precedence, that language makes that, I think, very clear. At the end of the first paragraph, some words to clarify the letter, such as, "This assistance is not intended to suggest that development outside the urban boundary would be ultimately supported," which is, I think, what we've heard from two council members. To me, that makes it very clear that we're allowing a process, nothing more. No decisions have been made for or against, just that a process is allowed to proceed. So, those would be my suggestions. These are Larry Green's words, not mine, but I agree with his words, and I think it defines both what we've heard in the public and what we've heard on the council, that this isn't receiving a unique treatment, that this is the process. And Ray, when I didn't explain, Larry Green is the executive director of the air quality district for Sacramento County.
Do you have a comment?
Just, just briefly, I would just say I have no problems with your two additions. I think if this is a strong pro- project, if it's a project that should happen, it should be able to withstand your restrictions or, or your additions to it. So, I would just say I have no problem with it being added to the letter.
Okay.
Well, you know, we've heard a lot about the history of this project, and we've talked 15 years, we've talked 1990. I think that's gotta tell you something. You know, we're talking 15, 18 years on this project. These issues have been hashed over again and again and again, and what we keep hearing about is the project. But, what I'm not hearing is any new information to tell me about the location, why it's the right location for this or any other project. And, I mean, I'm open ears, I'm willing, like, nobody's shedding any light on this. You know, in the last meeting, you know, I mean, this pretty much got passed through without any co- limited conversation. I'm very reluctant. I, 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 not so much reluctant, I just can't support this letter. I mean, to support this letter would suggest to somebody that I would consider supporting the project in that location, and that wouldn't be true. I can't emphasize enough and tell you that the project is not a bad project.
Let me finish, please.
Again, nobody's disputing whether or not, you know, this would be a good project or not. We've been disputing the location. Now, and I think the writing's on the wall, I'm sure the letter will be passed and go through, but if you're going to do that, I would suggest that you, for the investors' sake, I think that they're entitled to know that if this is a four-to-one vote, or a 5-0 vote, or whatever the vote comes out to be, I think they're entitled to know what that vote was, so that they understand what the support was. I think that's real important, because I think people are, need to know. If they're going to invest a lot of money into a project like this. Another thing is, I think it's really important, is that we do get this money upfront. If you're gonna move forward on it, I would like to know that we're not gonna invest a bunch of time, get down to the end of the wire, find out either they don't wanna, they're gonna pull out of the project, or the project won't go through, and then we get stiff with the costs. I think it's important, and I appreciate staff's recommendation, that we ensure that the funds get, get, they get it upfront, so that we're not being left holding the bag. Outside of that, again, I can't support the letter. I obviously don't support the location, so I'll leave it up to the rest of the council to decide.
Okay. Do you have a question, Dan?
I was just gonna ask, you said you haven't seen any information. This is what would, perhaps, if they decided to go forward, provide that information. And that's all I was gonna ask you, is would you be interested in seeing the information that's purported to be supplied in this process? They may never get to that point, but if they do, isn't that the information you'd like to see?
I appreciate what you're trying to do and say, Darrell, but after, I'd say, 15, 18 years, I think it's reasonable to say this location is not a good location, that the information and the information that you're going to hear and, and read about is already out there.
Okay, so your answer is no?
My answer is no. I don't feel that there'd be any new information found.
Okay. Would you have a comment?
I do. I'll keep it brief, though, because I've already taken up considerable council time. This project and this whole process really upsets me. I, I just, I can't believe that we've gotten to a point that we're-
I'll keep it brief, though, because I've already taken up considerable council time. This project and this whole process really upsets me. I, I just, I can't believe that we've gotten to a point that we're having negotiations with representatives of a political action committee, the developer and members of the council, behind closed doors. I just, I can't believe it's come to this. Quite simply, this is the project that just will not go away. They started talking about this project when I was still in high school. Three kids later, I'm on my second house and this project is still dividing Galt politics and the community. This project is never going to happen. I'm on the record. You've heard it. Ten years from now, they'll say I was a prophet. It's never going to happen, never. And I'm not gonna support sending a letter that's gonna send false hopes that it ever will. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Then if I could, I'd make a motion, we, uh, accept the recommended letter with the recommendations I made and I will read them again if you're comfortable with these exact words. In the first paragraph, the wording would be changed to read, "As with all proposed projects, comma, both inside and outside of the urban boundary, comma, the city staff will assist," and then it will continue as it currently is written. And at the end of the first paragraph, it would, uh, have the words that say, "This assistance is not intended to suggest that development outside the urban boundary will ultimately be supported."
Um, Daryl, on the letter, do you also support disclosing the outcome of the vote from the council?
No, 'cause if, if someone comes before us to have a building permit approved, we don't send them a letter saying, "Three of us supported your permit." They just find out their permit was approved, so.
But this isn't a letter.
Any more than, any other, any other project comes before us. If a buyer of this magnitude or a developer isn't smart enough to listen to this tape and find out, God help them, them, from themselves, not from us, but it is not the practice, it's never been the practice, that we send someone a letter saying, "Only some number of us supported your project." It's just, your project was or wasn't approved, your application was or wasn't approved. We never send them that kind of information, so I don't think it'd be appropriate here. I, I'm pretty confident they'll, they'll look into that and a lot more.
Okay.
Anyway, that's my recommendation.
Was that a recommendation?
It's my motion.
There's a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's on the floor, second. Any further discussion?
No.
None?
No.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No.
Aye. Next, next item. Would adjourn to redevelopment agency? We still have business to conduct. Thank you. Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Board members, Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Sutton?
Here. Have a comment?
I have no speaker sheet.
None? Informational consent agenda items?
Will it approve?
Second.
Well, normally we read them. Could you read them real quick?
Oh, um, three items. First one, minutes of the meeting of December sixteenth. The second one, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And the third tre- uh, approval of the treasures report for the period ending November two thousand eight.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Adjourn and reconvene to Galt City Council. City Clerk's report?
Okay, um, a couple, uh, one report and a couple reminders. Um, uh, at the November fourth, two thousand eight election, the Galt voters approved Measure R, increasing the local sales tax by one half percent for the purpose of enhancing police operations. In adopting the measure, voters al- also approved the establishment of an independent oversight committee to ensure that the funds are spent in a manner consistent, consistent with the provisions of the ballot measure. Uh, the city will not receive its first Measure R allocation until June two thousand nine, which, uh, is only a partial allocation. The full quarter funding will occur, um, sometime in August two thousand nine. So, in reviewing, just to let council know about the timeline, um, in March, the city clerk's office will advertise for letters of interest. In April, the city council will conduct interviews and make selections for the members of the committee. And hopefully, in May, um, we'll have some oversight committee orientations with, um, well, regarding, uh, the budget, uh, Measure R accountability, Brown Act, and police operations and personnel needs within the police department. So, this is just a, an informational item for council to kinda let you know what we're looking at in the next few months and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
None.
Nope.
Okay, just, um, quickly, a few reminders.
Do we need to make, uh, a motion or, 'cause you're asking for review and approve?
You can approve the timeline if you wish. It's, um, it's actually just informational to let you know if you don't hear anything for a few months, what we're doing.
I was looking at the attorney.
Um, it's listed as a, uh, an act, I am sorry, Archimany Entertainment.
Okay, so is there a motion on the floor?
Will it approve?
Second.
And second. Double second. Further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. And you had one or two other items?
I do have just a couple reminders. Uh, there's a planning commission, January eighth, at six thirty PM here in the council chambers. On January thirteenth, there's a wastewater treatment and plant upgrade oversight committee meeting at six PM in the community room. On January fourteenth, there's a Parks and Rec Commission special meeting at six PM in the council chambers. Also, on January fourteenth, a Parks Master Plant Update Ad Hoc Committee, seven PM in the council chambers. Um, January fifteenth, beautification committee at three thirty at the, in the city hall community room. Um, a reminder about the Second Annual Winter Bird Festival on January seventeenth, which takes us to our next city council meeting on January twentieth. The ethics training is January thirteenth, uh, in the Parks and Rec Building.
Okay.
And, um, we're gonna be setting an agenda on that, um, by the end of this week, so council will get notification.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, comments by staff?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the budget workshop will, uh, the clerk will be trying to give date, but we hope that will be the first one since February.
Okay. Good.
Then we have a, uh, a consultant we're working with for the goal setting and the team building. That will probably be a one day, one half of the day will be team building, one half of the day will be goal setting. That will probably happen at the end of February. But prior to that meeting, I will ask the council and I will ask the staff to identify the top ten or fifteen or twenty items that they wish to work on and we'll compile a sheet similar that we had before and we'll actually do a, a doc presentation so we'll know what some of those items are, when we meet with the facility.
Sounds good. Any questions?
That's in progress.
Any other staff reports?
No.
Okay. Okay. Comments by, uh, city council? Vice Mayor Payne?
Uh, tonight, I would ask you to consider, um, spending some money. Uh, the Community of Character Coalition has, um, uh, been out talking to the community, some of the churches, uh, businesses, to support the banners such as these that have the character trait as well as a, a picture representing the character trait. We're working on getting local people on these banners. Uh, it's, it's a little bit complicated because we have to get individuals to sign off and so we would like to move forward since we have six, uh, people that have already, um, paid their money for the banners and they're anxious to get them, um, in, out for everybody to see, but we do not have the hardware to hang them on. Uh, in one of our meetings, it was a suggestion that for these, uh, character traits, that we display them in front of the high school. It'll work out very well with their programs that they have at the high school, building character, as well as the fact that they have an electronic sign that also displays a special character trait. So, it just seems like it'd be a really good, uh, impact to the community for what we're trying to accomplish. I understand we have money in the budget or we have money in the fund already that we could use, uh, for this hardware, so I would like for the council to, um, consider and approve the sp- expenditure of some of that money for the hardware to hang the banners on. I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns you might have.
How much money are we talking about? Yeah.
Um, I believe the hardware is about a hundred and forty dollars, uh, per streetlight.
Per? Okay.
Uh, and what we had thought we would do is just simply, um, uh, spend the money as we have need, like, we have need for six, um, hardware pieces at this point, so, uh, we would ask money for that now. And if we get more businesses involved, uh, then we would continue down the street in front of the high school.
So, what would the total be? I'm sorry, approximately? I'm just curious.
Are we talking a dozen? I think that's.
Maybe a total of twelve?
Twelve or twenty or?
Eventually, right now, we have, um.
What's the cost of the twelve, you think, approximately?
Twelve times a hundred and forty.
Fourteen hundred for ten.
And I, I've checked and I think we have about five thousand dollars in the fund.
Greg, it's, do we own all of the, the light poles that are in front of the high school or are those smud light poles?
I'd have to check. I believe it's kind of a mix.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not, I don't know whether smud is opposed to us, since all these on their poles, we just need to check with them.
Would, would we have to adopt some type of an agreement with smud to be able to put them up?
I, I don't know the answer to that. We'd have to look into that for them. Uh, smud seems to be approached with all of these kinda, these kinda things.
On that, don't we have, uh, banners we put up for different events in the community, like the festival, Fourth of July, and some of them are on light standards and some are not? I mean, I think that's what we're talking about, right? I don't know if there was an agreement. I understand where you're coming, where you're going.
The, the council, this last year, authorized purchasing and development of new banners for both Old Town as well as Central.
That's what I'm referring to.
Central Galt. In the past, we, there were other banners for the Strawberry Festival and other events and so forth. Um, these ones were, were specifically designed to promote Old Town as well as the Central Business District and they are placed on existing street poles on Lincoln between A and, mm, B, I believe, and then also in, in Old Town on C and, and Fourth.
But those are on streetlights, right?
Those are on streetlights. And those, those poles are more of the decorative nature, poles that were installed by the city a, a number of years ago. The, the ones in front of Lincoln are more of the standard, uh, Cobra Head lights, I believe. Um.
Actually, counted them, there's, uh, I think between Elm and A Street, there's like twenty-four of them and they, they all looked, uh, uniform and, and modern. I don't know if that tells you anything if it's a smud pole or if it's a city pole. I don't know.
Anything looks modern's not smud, I tell you that.
Yeah, well.
I think most of them on Lincoln are the decorative, it's a square box style.
Yeah.
Which is a city light.
And we're all done on the two public workstrokes.
That's true, 'cause the city redid Lincoln Way all the way down, so they most likely are city lights.
We just need to check, right?
We'll, we'll verify before we install them. Um, there, there is about, we had some money left over from the banner project that we completed this year. Didn't cost as much as we anticipated, so the money that, uh, Vice Mayor Payne is referring to is money that's in the current budget, not designated for those specific poles, but designated for the banner program if the council so desired could choose to use some of the, the leftover funds for this project. How much leftover funds would we have, do you think? Um, it looks like we have about five thousand dollars left over. Yeah, there's more than enough there. I don't think that should be an issue.
I agree.
Do you wanna make a motion with the exact dollar amount that you want to appropriate?
Uh, maybe not to exceed, 'cause I'm sure there's, there's gonna be some, some tax money. And the other thing that Jason and I discussed also was the fact that our Parks and Rec people could, uh, hang them so we don't have, um, outside labor costs. And by doing just a few at a time, it would be something that they could work at, um, work it in with their regular schedule. It wouldn't be taking them away from their, their normal work.
You making a motion?
Would you?
No, no.
Oh, you want?
You wanna make a motion?
Okay. Um, what did we come up with was the amount?
I think if you say sixteen hundred dollars or more than.
Okay.
If I could add, twelve of them at a hundred and forty is sixteen eighty.
Okay.
And maybe shipping, sales tax, my suggestion would be no more than two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I would like to move that we, um, uh, spend not to exceed two thousand dollars for the hardware, for the streetlights, um, to hang the banners in front of the high school on Lincoln Way.
I'll second the motion.
Motion was made in second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Claire?
My item, finally got here. It's been on the agenda now for.
Three times.
Three months. We've been curious for months. I know. We've been dying to hear it. But we're gonna do that second one, uh, first because that's more important. Um, we, it's all right. We have a, a, a meeting set up tomorrow, as I had mentioned before, with Lundgren's staff to give them our, uh, appropriation request. And tonight, what's agenda is, and ask staffs to go through it, is what do we wanna ask for and then we need to decide if that's what we wanna ask for. So, uh, it's the same process we've been going through for a while. Um, I've been doing it kinda liaison on behalf of the council for.
That's a good list.
Five years, I guess. And, uh, but the process is basically staff and council come up with their request. We present it to our congress member and then, as, as you know, I go back there for my, my real job, as I call it, and I'll start going back there next month and in the next three months, I'll probably be there three to five times over the next three months. And so, I'll start with having, uh, meetings with, of course, Lundgren's staff, uh, but I also meet with Boxer and Feinstein's staff and, uh, just keep them apprised of what they can expect to be coming forward, so.
You know, Daryl, I, I'm glad you brought it up, to be honest with you. Uh, hopefully, maybe if we can find some funding, uh, for the police department, uh, not for so much personnel or anything of that nature, but more or less for, um, IT, information technology or, there's, uh, license plate readers out there that I've been talking about and there's some other things that out there I think that our police department needs in order to operate as, as a full functioning, uh, operation. Um, I just, uh, did some training up at, uh, McQuillan Park, uh, post, police officer standard training with some other agencies. And it's amazing what these other agencies have. And when I come back and, you know, we don't have tracking devices, we don't have, you know, there's a lot we don't have and, and you already know this, I'm sure. But I think maybe this is an opportunity that, you know, maybe we can get it out there, maybe we can get some funding so that we can start looking to, uh, fill that void.
Yes. Well, there's, there's two things that I'd recommend, anyway. Petey Vich, as you know, is our lead guy. And for those who don't know, Petey Vich is our lobbyist who is, uh, based in Washington, DC.
Right.
We should always give him, you can give him the longest list you want. You can put a hundred things on it and say, "Keep your eyes out if you ever see funding, watch for these things." What typically Lundgren and his staff prefer, which is not unique to him, it's all the congressional members.
Right.
They basically have three things on a good day that they can put forth for us. That's on a good day. On a bad day, which I suspect we're in the middle of, it could be one or zero. So, what they're gonna want tomorrow from us is, if there's nothing else we could fight for you, what is the single number one thing that you want? And if there's a chutz for a second and a third, what are those? I've never, anyway, experienced that they can go beyond three and we've never gotten I've never, anyway, experienced that they can go beyond three, and we've never gotten three. We've only ever gotten one. But that's not us. That's every city carte blanche. So, I'll let Ted kind of talk about. But- but to your point, Don, that should go on the list. It can either be the number-one thing we asked Lundgren for, or it can be on Pete Eviich's, "Keep an eye out for us."
And I have asked for- to have that put on Pete Eviich's list.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, uh, I think it should also be on Congressman Lundgren's as well.
Okay.
Councilman Claire did his job, and he assigned us to meet with Pete Eviich, and we sat down, we spent about an hour and a half with Pete. We went through this in great detail. Number one, what he tells us when we make the- the request to the legislator, that we don't overload them, because money is very tight and there's no sense of going beyond what you think you can do. So there's three top requests. Number one would be four million dollars for the Galt wastewater treatment plant. Number two would be a million dollars for the arsenic wastewater treatment facilities. Number three would be three million for the Galt interchange project. Then there are two more backup ones, uh, for other federal agencies that we could seek, and that would be a million and a half for Galt regional law enforcement training facility, which is the, uh, rifle range. And the last one would be two million for the Galt South Sacramento County Area Transit Center. What Pete did is he analyzed the probability that we would get anything from any agency and which ones we would stand the best chance to get funding from. And these are the five that we would submit, with the top three going to Lundgren. The other two, if we have any other opportunities, then Pete would seek those out through those agencies.
One of the things that Lundgren and his staff look for in particular are things with the federal nexus. The wastewater treatment plant, arsenic in particular, has direct federal nexus, because those are requirements from the federal government on the water quality standards and so forth. So their mandates are requiring us to make the upgrades, and so there's a clear federal nexus between the cost of that project and- and the federal government. So that's why we think those, and Pete agrees that those are probably the two strongest projects, Central Interchange being- being behind that one. Um, the other thing, he mentioned that this is a unique year with, uh, the stimulus package that's being proposed with infrastructure and so forth. So there may be additional opportunities. We've already submitted, um, a list of projects that we believe are ready to go in the next six months to- to twelve months. We've submitted it through Secog and League of California Cities and other- other avenues. We've given it to Pete Eviich. Um, he also mentioned that as part of that, there's likely to be a- a large component of- of energy, projects associated with, um, green energy, energy efficiency projects, things of that sort. So to the extent that we have projects identified that would qualify for that, those are ones that we could submit separate from the normal appropriation process. Those would be submitted as part of the- the stimulus package process, which is gonna be done on a- on a separate- separate track.
Let me answer Don's question. Uh, most of the, uh, police money would come through the, uh, help me, the new commen- new one to keep us all safe. What is it?
Security.
Not security.
That's security. That money goes to an area-wide, uh, group who make those allocations. We just received a three hundred thousand dollar grant for them. So what we would do is, is that the chief can submit those to the local agency. Those are distributed to the state, and this committee, the law enforcement committee, is the one that allocates those out.
Alright, um, we, when you say "we" receive three hundred thousand, are you talking about the city?
No, the police department.
Our police department, meaning. Okay, so, uh, so he has three hundred...
It has to do with the radio compatibility, so that we would be compatible with all of the other...
That's what the revenue, that's what it's for?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Now, again, this is a- a lengthy, complicated process, just like they say, you know, you don't wanna see how they make sausage. Um, but- but the basic plan, if you will, is pretty much the same. First, we need concurrence from our congressional member that he supports the request. And to his credit and his staff, they've always been very direct with us. They tell us the ones that they don't see that they can, you know, champion for us, and they tell us the ones they can. I have worked with other congressional members and/or staffs who kind of leave everybody with a warm and fuzzy, "Thanks for coming in today." And many people leave thinking, "Oh, well, I think ours is one of the projects." But in fact, there's a- they formally close the applications and they formally submit to the next level of the process their items. And you're either in or you're not. It's- it's not maybe, it's you either are or you aren't. And- and I don't know, I suspect ninety-eight percent of all requests don't make that first cut. Those last two percent that make the cut may never get there either. But they're the only things at that point that are even open for discussion. Now, members like Feinstein, who are powerful and chair the appropriations committee, they can put anything they want in along the way, and then there's gonna be all sorts of committee meetings and everything else. And that's really where Pete becomes our strongest local advocate, is he and his people like Laura track the committee meetings. What are you hearing? They're talking to staffers. What's going on in there? Is our project in? Did it get thrown out? And out the other end comes a list, and then that becomes public information, and it's, you can see you're in or you're out. But this mess in between, it's a- it's a, just an unknown world, and it's people like Pete are what we depend on to keep us in the mix. And then what I always try to say is, our goal is to get our congressional member to put us in and to get our senators to leave it there.
I think, having said that, and, uh, I think the wastewater treatment plant upgrade probably needs to be at the very top of the priority. If it was up to me, I, you know, I don't know how the rest feel, but, you know, if we're gonna have to take a project, that's the one we start with right there.
Yeah. I like the order that we've got right now. I think it's solid and it represents the true needs of the community. I am interested to see what's gonna happen with President Obama's stimulus package. We've all been hearing through the National League of Cities and the League of California Cities that he is going to appropriate a significant amount of money to local governments, for public works, projects, foreclosure, rehabilitation, things like that. So as soon as staff gets information, I think it'd be great to, uh, send it out to the entire council to let us know what's going on.
Yeah. My last conversation with Pete, and then I have just another personal friend who's a- who- who has his own lobbying firm. Um, the current word is that they're really looking to push money to immediate job-creating projects. And I pass word back to our folks, even from Secog, um, being six months ready is good, ninety days is even better. And so any projects that we can identify that we're ninety days from starting, if you give us funding at- at our board at Secog, those are things we're looking at, because we're hearing the federal money that's coming out. They're gonna want jobs as fast as that money can cause a project to create. So you could have a great project that'll start a year from now. That is not what they're interested in.
I think I'll have Greg respond, but if Greg told me correctly, I think the one that probably could start the quickest would be the arsenic one. Is that correct?
Received bits, the arsenic project, we may bring it to the council at the next meeting.
Right.
Uh, we have a significant number of projects that we could put together within their timeframe, if they throw additional money. And a lot of our projects are already in the CIP. We would then be substituting this money with other money that we have.
Yeah, just as, um, I think Andrew mentioned, I was, uh, elected by the Secog board as the new vice chair of Secog. And so today was my first official day, and we had a conference call to talk about a number of things. Myself is the vice chair, and Helen Thompson is our chair and our executive director. Um, but our strategic planning committee, which is a little larger group of us, will meet on Monday. And our number-one thing is to have our projects aligned, to be ready to receive the federal funding the moment it's released. It's gonna be absolutely critical. Every group like us across the entire United States is trying to do the same thing. And our job will be to convince the appropriators that our projects are the right projects to- to move that money toward. And no offense to any state-elected officials, but we don't want the money go to state California. We want it to come direct to, in our case, Secog, who is the metropolitan, uh, planning organization, because- because we can get it then to the projects and deliver it the fastest, so...
I think these projects, um, uh, fall in line with what I'm hearing the stimulus package is going to be, uh, supporting. I think they are obviously some of the most important projects we have. So unless there's anything else that we want to add to the list, I would support the list that we have.
I agree. Alright, then, uh, you need a motion or just need consensus that this is our list?
I'd like to motion, so when we talk to Pete, we can say the council took a motion going on, and we all support it.
And I'll move that we adopt the projects in the order presented to us in staff's report.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, go ahead.
Do we want to move the arsenic? It wasn't number one, was it? Would it matter if it was moved up to the number...
Number five was the arsenic can be involved. It can be in this, and it can also be the one that we send to the, uh, Obama construction. So let us see them both.
Just leave it like it is? Okay.
No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, the other item that I've had on for a while, um, I'm gonna try and do this in the friendliest possible way and hope it'll be received accordingly. We'll find out. Um, every election, it gets pretty heated, and a lot of things get said, and there's a lot of rhetoric. And we've heard more of it tonight when the Delta Greens came up. And the- the typical rhetoric has to do with whoever's buying votes or, um, buying council members or, I mean, just all those kinds of words, which I don't think do any of us or any communities any good. And special interest, that's usually a word we hear used a lot. And it's always someone you're opposed to, and we're all guilty of it. I'll- I'll start by saying, everything I'm about to say, I have participated in some part, one way or another. But- but a special interest is almost always someone you're opposed to and never someone just part of your special interest, if you will. We talked about the GPOA tonight. They're certainly a special interest in their labor negotiating people. We talked about the City of Galt. We are a special interest ourselves, and we just approve to tell our federal lobbyist what he's to fight for. Teachers have special interests. Uh, state employees have special interests. My company. I mean, it goes on and on and on. But we tend to use it as a derogatory term, that those special interests are doing whatever they're doing. And as I say, we- we talked about, you know, people are supposedly, their votes are purchased because someone contributed money to their campaign. As far as I know, all of us sitting up here have received contributions to our campaigns. Again, I'll raise my hand as the first, but I don't know anyone up here who hasn't. And- and I don't think it helps us or the community to assume that if someone contributed to your campaign, you're bought and paid for. So tonight, we heard the old, "Certain people up here were bought and paid for by the Delta Greens. Therefore, Delta Greens will get their vote." But that, the reverse of that would be that certain members up here received contributions. From Mike Eaton, we heard from tonight, Jude Lamar. And if you assume the first assumption, you have to assume that, that the people who got, the people opposed to Delta Greens, that they've been bought and paid for also. I don't believe either is true. I just don't.
I got a lot of my money from labor unions and...
And you're bought and paid for by them.
They're- they're not really happy with my slow-growth philosophy in regards to the City of Galt, so...
And that's an example, like I say, of they are a special interest, but it doesn't mean they're a bad one. And this was their recommendation on who they wanted people to vote for. And their next newspaper was, "We did it." Of all the- all the people, they got elected. And I say, "God bless them." I support special interests. I support PACs. I support political contributions. We have a Boys and Girls Club who needs contributions right now. Who do you think they're going to go to? They're going to go to people they think have a similar philosophy to what they have and hope that those people will donate money to the Boys and Girls Club. My wife and I belong to World Vision, which supports a child in Africa, as many people in our community do for Lesotho. Before that, I was part of Save the Children. I'm sure we're on a list of organizations looking for money to send us requests, because we kind of have those belief systems. And I- I believe a lot of political contributions have more to do with belief systems than independent projects or anything else. So we're gonna be meeting, hopefully, in team-building and everything else. We've talked about setting the example. I think we can set the example for the community that we've all gotten contributions. It doesn't mean we're bought and paid for, but it should be, I agree, transparent and known, and let the people decide what that means. Mike Eaton, who was here earlier, you can go on the internet and see all the contributions he's made, 'cause he's made some large ones to certain Democratic people. That's fine. God bless him. I support that. You may be able to find out I've made contributions. Again, I have no problem with it. The problem I have is when we get caught up in the rhetoric, as if somehow only one group of people are the people and that somehow they're the bad people. Lori Huer tonight used to be the head of a PAC. I have no problem with it. Again, I believe in PACs. But I don't think we should then say, "Another PAC's bad, 'cause we didn't like that PAC, and her PAC's okay." So I'm just asking, in- in the spirit of moving forward, I think we got through the Delta Greens pretty cooperatively tonight, very respectfully tonight. I think we stated some things that we were for and against. That's what we're supposed to do up here. And- and as little rhetoric as we can have, now the next election, it'll be out of control. That's the democratic process, and each individual can decide how respectful they want to be in their campaign. But there will be special interests in the next campaign. There will be political contributions in the next campaign. But I personally think it doesn't do any of us good to state that because you received a contribution, that your vote has been purchased, plain and simple. And Tim, who was primarily known for not taking contributions at the city council level, when he ran for state office, he decided then to take political contributions. I assume he realized, to hopefully get his message out to the voters of the state of California, he realized, he, I'm assuming, I'm not speaking on his behalf, I assume he realized he would need more funding than he normally was able to amass for a city council. I don't hold it against him. He wanted contributions. He wanted to run for state office. Again, I have no problem with that. I just- I just hope we can soften the tone of, "Ooh, you took a contribution, therefore you're bought and paid for." Because when Jude Lamar came up tonight and spoke, I don't believe anyone she's contributed to automatically is gonna do what she said, 'cause she sent them something less than a hundred dollars. But I don't also believe another council member's gonna do what someone else sent them a hundred dollars for either. So I think, hopefully, we all deserve the same respect in that area. Now, the- the tie-in to that topic, and- and tonight, I don't want to take any particular action on it, but I do believe, and you've heard me say, our campaign finance ordinance has weaknesses. And at some point collectively, I hope we can clean up those weaknesses, so it's a more effective but achieves the goals that I believe the people wanted when it was passed. And that's more language, and that's more current law than the law that was either aware of or the law that was in place when that was done, so... I have no- no specific recommendations at this time. I just would hope between now and say the next election that we can clean some of that up, because quite frankly, that's what lives on the spot or anyone else. But anyone who's been through that ordinance, I think, could go, "Yeah, I- I can tell you a couple of rough areas that, boy, if I could see it cleaned up." The people who have to teach it would be happier. The people who have to enforce it would be happier. The citizens of Galt would be better protected from litigation and so, like I say, there's no urgency for it, but sometime in the next year or so, maybe we could look at cleaning up some of that, so that it's a more effective piece of legislation without weakening it at all.
Well, I'm open to it, honestly. I- I think it's a, it would be a good idea, so that it, you know, it can't be challenged and it is held up and- and you keep the concept intact. Um, you know, I- I'd be interested in hearing more about it.
And like I say...
If you like, I'd even be willing to work with you on the issue, if you'd like.
Like I say, the basic method, as I understand it, and I have asked our city attorney for just some, yes, that could be a possibility or not, would be something that would, in essence, the voters would have to go on. And by approving a proposal, they would replace the current one with the cleaned-up version, without softening or taking away the intent of it. So I think that would be purely up to the voters.
Okay.
And I agree with you. It does need to be cleaned up. It sounds to me like we've got a couple of council members that are, you know, willing to sit down, you know, down the road with the attorney too, so... But, well, let's see.
Uh, if I can just, as a quick comment, um...
You only had two items.
I know. This is a- this is a shorter. I told you about the San Mateen Valley Rail Committee that I represent our Sacramento County on. Our next meeting is January eighth. It'll be down on our set. Um, we have all sorts of issues, but I'll continue to be working on the, what I call, the ACE train concept. And, um, I will be setting up meetings with the mayors of the other cities involved to give them a briefing of just what we're proposing, what- what cooperation we'd need from their city to find out if they have a general interest in it. And, I mean, this is gonna be a lengthy process, but I'll- I'll be having a series of these meetings and, uh, keep reporting back to you what the interest level is. But again, it's, concept that affects us is basically a train, a commuter train on hard rail, not light rail, heavy rail, right through the train track we have now, that would, for our purposes, begin in Stockton, stop in Lodi, Galt, Elk Grove, ending up in downtown Sacramento at the Amtrak station, with probably a stop out at Sixty-Fifth Avenue for college students to transfer to Sac State or people to transfer to the light rail station at that location. And what it could do to revitalize our downtown, I think, is almost unestable. Just to get the foot traffic back down in downtown in mornings and evenings, combined with the senior project, could just turn that whole thing around, so I'll keep you posted.
Wouldn't need less, uh, train whistles?
Um, well, that's a good question. We don't need more whistles. I don't know. Well, it could, because, actually, you know, that's- that's a good point. To achieve it, the current trains, or some of them, would have to go out to the Western alignment that aren't stopping in our town anyway, which none of them do. So we would get some tr- some whistles out in the country further.
Good.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, Councilmember Haynes stepped out for a moment, uh...
I can, uh, go ahead with mine.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, item six was the cast meeting recap. I want to congratulate Ted on taking care of that for me under his own agenda item. So, uh, there's not really anything else for me to report on. Sustainable energy program next... Sustainable Energy Program, next steps. At the last meeting, I discussed the fact that I'm going to be giving a presentation in the city of Davis. That's gonna be followed up with a meeting and a, a presentation in the city of Roseville and Folsom, so that when we bring this presentation before Secog, we can have four sister cities united together for the proposal. My third item was the Mobile Home Park Issues Town Hall Meeting. Uh, Councilman Haynes and myself are interested in hosting this the end of the month here in the city of Galt. And what we're looking for from council is to provide direction to the Parks and Recreation staff to allow us to use one of the facilities within the city sphere to conduct this town hall meeting, 'cause we're, we're anticipating a large crowd. Okay. Yeah, we'll disclose the date of the meeting after we talk to voice at the next city council meeting. My last item is the National League of Cities Reduced Prescription Drug Benefit Program. Got a copy of this for all the council members up here. I found out about this in the National League of Cities, uh, newspaper that we all receive. Just gonna provide a little overview briefly. The National League of Cities has launched a free prescription discount card program for member cities to help residents cope with the high costs of prescription drugs. Now it is possible for your city to offer savings on prescription drugs to your residents who are without health insurance, a traditional pharmacy benefit plan, or have prescriptions not covered by insurance. The NLC Prescription Discount Card Program is administered by CVS Carmark, Caremark, an experienced prescription discount card provider, who has administered these programs since nineteen ninety-two. There is no cost to your city to sponsor the program in collaboration with the NLC. CVS Caremark will produce and provide the city with personalized, that's with the city's name and logo, prescription discount ID cards, as well as other template marketing materials. Now, I contacted the National League of Cities about this program, and, uh, I asked for a list of pharmacies that participate here in the city of Galt. And the pharmacies would be Rayleigh's, Long's, and Valley Pharmacy, so. Our three pharmacies here in Galt are, all participate. Following the launch in your city, your residents will have access to the program, which includes average savings of twenty percent, coverage for all family members, no limit on how many times the card can be used, no age requirements, no income requirements, no enrollment fees, no membership fees, and easy access, nine out of ten pharmacies nationwide participate in the program. For the city sponsorship, the NLC Prescription Discount Card Program is a member service of the National League of Cities. Our previous president of the National League of Cities, Cynthia McCollum, she intended to make participation in the National League of Cities more beneficial to cities, and she kind of championed this effort. To launch the program successfully, maximize the program benefits, and generate goodwill for your city, requires city promotion and support of the program, and that's really the only burden that we have to bear. We would have to use our city, our Galt connections, newsletter, our contacts with local media outlets to get the word out about the program. Basically, everything else is handled by either the National League of Cities or CVS Caremark. So what I'm asking council for tonight is to allow me to work with CBS Caremark to submit the application and get the process started, so that we can implement this. I got an email back from Mark Shapiro, who's the representative from the National League of Cities, and he tells me that eight weeks is the projected launch date once you've submitted the application, so we can get it done pretty quickly. Is that okay with council?
Sounds good.
Excellent.
When's the next, uh, newsletter?
This one just came out.
Yeah. We just had one come out a week ago.
I guess we'll have to, we'll have to champion the program using local media outlets before we send out their next one.
I'm sorry, April. I missed one.
April.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we have one in the spring sometime, but it doesn't-
I don't know what I was thinking.
Okay. That's okay.
Well, that would fit in, right?
Great, yeah. And other than that, just wanted to say again that it was, uh, truly sad to hear that Judge Hinke passed away. I think a lot of us know that he spent many a days sitting up in this seat right here, protected by the bulletproof plate below. He was certainly a local legend. He was a, a person that represented old Galt and represented, you know, the character of this community, and it was really sad to see him, see him pass away. So, I know all five of us, everyone up here, our hearts are with the Hinke family.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, Don, you had stepped out, you had a couple of items.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, thank you, by the way. Um, I wanted to go over the police report. Um, just show, or I just want the public to get an idea of really what our, our police department's up against. Um, during the month of November, they did twenty-two-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service during this month. I mean, that's absolutely incredible. Um, during this time, um, we had, uh, case of interest more or less, where we had two gang-related stabbings, one bank robbery and one gas station robbery. You know, during these hard times, we're starting to see an increase in crime, and people are getting more bold. And the reason I put so much emphasis on our police department and why I'm so passionate about it is because, uh, of all times, right now, I think we need to be proactive, and that's why I'm pushing so hard to, you know, uh, get more officers on the street, that's why I spearheaded Measure R, that's why it was so important to see it get passed, and it's important, that's why I'm trying to see us get more equipment and, and to bring our police department up to, up to par with the rest of them, so they can continue to, uh, address these issues, to be even more effective in the process. Uh, I thought that was important to, to mention. Also, um, we're talking about the Second Annual Wa- uh, Winter Bird Festival. Unfortunately, Councilman Raboy wasn't here, but this was his baby, actually. He worked, you know, he worked really hard on it. He was very passionate about it, but if you haven't already joined up, uh, the seats are getting limited. I'd ask anybody out there who hasn't done it, if you want to get involved, it's gonna be on, uh, the seventeenth of, uh, January, it's gonna be a Saturday, it's gonna be between eight and five PM. Um, as of this morning, I, I, we had already added two buses to the evening tour. They're gonna have as many as thirty vendors there, which is, I forget what we had last year, does anybody remember?
I had about half that, but let me tell a story you need to thank Jennifer. Last week, Jennifer only had about thirty-five spaces or forty spaces filled. She came to me and she came to a couple of council people, and she said, "We need to get the B, because last year, when the B did an article, then they started coming in." Finally, we got a B article, the next day, she took in over a hundred-and-twenty requests. And, uh, she had to find some more buses, because, uh, in that short period of time, which has only been about four or five days, it's almost, uh, filled up almost a hundred percent.
She did, she's excellent. I mean, she's done a wonderful job.
We've got almost five hundred people signed up for tours now.
Isn't that incredible? I know my family and I have already signed up. If you haven't, I mean, this is a wonderful thing, it's a great experience. A lot of people don't even know the Conservancy's out here, you know, so I mean, this is a good way for them to get, uh, introduced to it. But, uh, I think it's also important that, you know, you know, we're gonna have vendors and presentations, but I also want to thank, uh, the school district for advertising, getting the word out, uh, the Galt Herald, and, and, uh, most certainly, the Sacramento Bee for stepping up to the plate, uh, I think it was excellent. And, like I said, it's gonna be January seventeenth, it's gonna be at McCaffrey Middle School, the address, if people don't already know, is nine-nine-seven Park Terrace Drive, uh, and I hope to see many, many people there. Um, I want to touch on one other thing. There's a great article that I thought the Lodi News Sentinel did on our community. And, you know, we have had, some of our small businesses had closed up, and I, and I, and I really was sorry to see them go. Uh, Someplace Fun, you know, my grandkid, he loved to go there, it was one of his favorite places. You got Mad Dog Video, and we'd lost a couple of the smaller businesses that were really a part of the community. And I shouldn't even say they were a smaller business, because Someplace Fun really had just expanded before they'd closed up, but, um, but this was a lovely article, I thought, that Lodi News Sentinel, and this was, uh, written by Mark Lutz, and it says, "Desperate Economy, Galt Businesses Opening and Growing." Says here, "And, and all too common sight these days are signs proclaiming going out of business, closed, or spaced release, not in Galt. While a lagging economy seems to be affecting almost every industry, Galt, Galt is home to a new pro-school, and, and auto, uh, repair shop, ride-a, TSC, tractor supply, and businesses such as Blue Ribbon Track, Tac, excuse me, which is expanding its services here in Galt." I mean, these are businesses that, uh, we're seeing coming in now, while so many of the places are seeing businesses go out. Uh, this is gonna be quite a contribution to our community. A lot of this are actually pretty big-ticket items. Um, but I want to thank the Lodi News Sentinel, I think it's a great article to our community, and it makes us look good, you know, during these hard times, so I thank them personally. And I think Mark Lutz did an excellent job in writing this. Uh, I do want to ask those along, along that subject, if I could get a quick answer. Um, KFC, Long John Silver's, uh, is that still coming, uh, do we have any information on that?
Last we heard, that they were, they had, um, said that they had postponed it temporarily, that they would probably come back in the spring.
Spring or summer.
Spring or summer for-
For this year?
Hold their permits, yes.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna see them in two thousand nine, most likely. That's excellent. So, uh, again, I, you know, I mean, you know, you hear all this rhetoric about how, you know, we're not doing enough, and, but we have, we've done quite a bit, that's why we're seeing these businesses. And really, this is a, uh, uh, this is really a compliment, it's a really a reflection of staff, because I'll be honest with you, these are the ones who are doing all the negotiating. These guys are the ones that are out there, uh, you know, talking to these people and trying to get the right businesses, but these are some of the right businesses, what we're looking for. And I think it's wonderful, and I thank them very much. Um, outside of that, I don't have anything else, but thank you.
Thank you. I had two items. And one is the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I brought it up a couple of weeks ago, a couple of times. Uh, I had, I'd sat down with, uh, Jason and the chief, uh, there were files that we had kept from before. Hopefully, I don't know, Jason, did we get this out to the council, the copy of this?
Just had a copy to Liz to distribute to the council, I believe it was sent out.
I don't know if it was in your email, or it's, it was in the email? Oh.
Was it in the email?
Yes.
Okay, it wasn't a hard copy.
I apologize. I'm locked out of my computer, but I should give it to, I'll get it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, I'll kind of just give an executive summary, I'd like to get concurrence from, uh, council. Uh, this is one of the items that, uh, one, I was, I would like to chair, but I would like to have another council member co-chair. I know I'd spoke, spoken to, uh, Councilmember, uh, Don Haynes before, but, uh, and if you don't have it, I'll just, I think maybe some of you don't, so, just briefly, it's, uh, the police chief, our designee as an advisory, uh, the fire chief, CSU, we'll ask them, they were on it before, kind of as an advisory, Public Works Department Head, these are all our designee or, or advisory people. Uh, and then, uh, five individuals, uh, from the community that I would like to advertise and have Liz do that, and we get to actually appoint someone to be on that committee from the public. There would, there was one other individual that was very instrumental before, and that's a representative from the Parks and Rec, so it's the director, and actually, it was, uh, somebody from the, uh, Galt market. And again, the safety committee is advisory only, it would take care of many, many items where the public, uh, feel very uncomfortable, come, come into the podium, and it's, uh, to flow different things, such as, we talked about with police issues, lighting, uh, and also the emergency operation plan. And, uh, this is something that, uh, I personally want to spearhead, but I would like the involvement, you know, from some of the council members.
Yeah. I, I'm interested in working with you, but before I do that, let me ask the city attorney something, because Andrew Meredith and I are working together with a group called, uh, Galt Citizens Against Crime, with the same group that, that, uh, pushed through the Measure R initiative. Uh, is there any conflict of interest there, that we're, if Andrew and I? We're, we're more of a community group, so we're really addressing the issues. I think what council, what Mayor, uh, Shelton, Shelton is suggesting is that we're gonna address, we're gonna address the issues, but we won't actually, we'll, you know, we'll bring it to council, but it'll be addressed through council. I don't-
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee that there's, there's any problem with, uh, council members working with community groups and, uh, simultaneously serving on a, uh, a council-formed advisory committee.
Okay, and I would like to thank you, and that's because this, as you know, one of, I mean, like yourself, it's important to me, and I, I'm very passionate about it.
Okay. Yeah, and again, you know, it's still gonna flow back to if it's something with the police department, or Public Works, or Parks and Recreation, you know, it's to get the people to understand kind of what the process is, and they can speak in a small group, but also part of that is, you know, we get involvement from the community too.
Right. Yeah, right, I agree.
If, if I could ask-
Sure.
Uh, really to the chief, the schools do their lockdown drills? Is there coordination with us and them? Okay, and I don't know if that's something the safety committee would look at, or not, or school representative, but from general safety, you might want to ask the schools if they want to come to any meeting, just talk about whatever. Uh, it's gotta be a heck of a drill to lock down the whole school and get all the students and everything else, so I don't know if there's any coordination efforts there that might help even once a year for them to, to speak at that.
Right, and I'm glad you brought that up, because some of those items that, uh, we would be discussing is, you know, to include like traffic, pedestrian, uh, safety, special events, I mean, the committee before, and actually, it was Parks and Rec, uh, that actually spearheaded that and formulated it. So, for example, we have some kind of event in the community, then it would, it goes through Parks and Rec Recreation, and, uh, actually, it was, uh, I don't mean to throw him under the bus, but I'm hoping he'll volunteer to be on it too, as a mondo, which was very instrumental in making sure that special events were done. So if we have something out at even Historical Society, you know, which several of us volunteer for their car show, and to make sure that the local fire department is aware, we have traffic circulation, overall safety, as well as consume this fire, or the local fire department, you know, American Red Cross, those are some of the functions. So, there's so many items that are going on in the community, so it would let us know. Yeah, and that's, that's what, some of the other purposes for that. But hopefully, uh, everyone will get this letter and we can move this along, I appreciate it, so, uh-
So you and I will work on that. You, will you email me, Randy, with a, uh, a date you want to get together and discuss it in more detail?
Right. Yeah, I'd like for maybe you and I, maybe within a couple of weeks, we could sit down, maybe through with Liz, can we do that? Maybe the three of us?
Okay. That works for me.
Tomorrow morning, since we're gonna maybe get home before midnight, we can do it at eight AM? I'm kidding. No, I'm kidding. Okay. So I just kind of want a consensus, is that kind of a consensus from-
Somebody else minds?
Sure. Okay. All right, good. Good. Okay, the other item I had was, uh, it's, for lack of a better term, was a developer, builder, kind of a build, business and staff to, uh, work together for, so that the committee is not going to interfere, it's still, you know, kind of an advisory and to assist, and it's for processing and reviewing of any issues on projects. I mean, example, we just did a charter school, we just did Delta Greens. Uh, Elliot Holmes has approached me to talk with me, uh, there's the people that, uh, helped me out, Jason, from the theater movie, uh, that group, that want to sit down with us. And those are some of the things.
Right.
Uh, I've found in the past, even on council before, and even when I was on the fire board, that a lot of times, they just want to be heard, and, you know, it's kind of like this, it's, it's called like a pre-construction meeting, is what we do in the fire service. And, you know, you just know what exactly what is required, you know, so there are no misunderstandings. Because sometimes people, we have staff members that give pretty precise and clear direction, and unfortunately, it's, it's misunderstood, I should say, I'm trying to be nice about it, but. And sometimes there are heated moments where we're, well, which, council, we all agree that we're passionate about different things, but this way, you know, we sit down and discuss some stuff, no, you know, and that other council member that would be on there with me would understand that, it's just a process. I know I'd like for one of the other council members to be on, I had spoken a couple of times before to ask Barbara Payne, I don't know if you were still interested in being on it?
I, it's something that I am very interested in.
Okay. All right. So is there consensus on from council, or, I mean, we're not gonna jump in and do anything, it's just sitting there, it's gonna be directed back through, you know, Jason, or, and I'm sure that, Kurt, I want to coordinate like we did last time, you know, meetings kind of through you. It's kind of like the safety meeting, let me back up a little bit. It's not that we need to have a meeting every thirty days. I mean, I think when we start out, we'll have a meeting and maybe a follow-up in thirty days, but then I think we could probably go semi, you know, bi-monthly or quarterly. And it'd be the same with working with the people in, uh, business developer, property owners, same thing. We all have a lot of meetings, and once people know that, okay, we're meeting, you know, the next meeting is not this month, it's next month, but we can also adjust.
One of the things the mayor, that we used it for previously, was to give anyone updates One of the things I remember that we used it for previously was to give anyone updates as to what's going on with the waste treatment plant and capacity and just things that landowners.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 'cause I think, again, to the bad words, we, we use the word developer sometimes in that category and, and be a developer. It can just be a landowner who has an interest, may not want to come to the meeting, or it may not be the setting in which, but they just want to hear from staff, the general update as to those types of issues.
Do we currently have two council members assigned to working with the businesses?
Pardon me?
We have a committee with two council members who are specifically working with businesses, local businesses, right?
I think, uh-
The economic development.
We're talking about developers though.
Yeah. But this could be, uh, you know, homeowner, mom and pop business, I mean.
I think it's a good idea. I think, uh, contrary to, I think, uh, what Lori Huer or someone was saying, maybe it was Tracy Gross, but I think this would make it more transparent. It would, it would lend itself to be less of an idea of, of back room agreement because it would be a structured, um, type of a meeting with-
Yeah, the comment that it's closed is not true.
Right. Right. And there's usually, uh, uh, notices posted and everything.
Yeah.
But I, I think this is a good idea because you'd have staff, you'd have council people involved and, um, it would be more transparent to the whole council. I, at least that would be my goal.
Was there a consensus from council or?
Um, just help me out a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the difference between this and the economic development, what would be, what are we looking at a little bit differently? Are you just saying that with the development builder, business staff, council type of committee is that you're more or less addressing the needs of the, of the more mom and pop, the addressing the small, uh, local, uh, privately owned businesses?
Everyone.
Everyone though?
Or anyone.
Okay. So, I'm just, uh, uh, just, can you help me out? I just want to, just for clarity, to distinguish the difference we have in the economic development, uh, committee because, um-
Well, the, the Economic Development Committee was really put together when we started the process of developing the Economic Development Strategy.
Right.
When we were getting input, we had, um, two council members on that committee as well as, um, representatives from various business groups in the community from different, um, different, you know, the organizations or businesses. And they recommended the adoption of the program, the, the strategic plan back to the council.
Okay.
But this past summer. And so, they had a specific task and a specific focus for what they were doing. That group has not met since the adoption of that plan. I think the focus of this one is to look at specific projects coming forward. So, let's say the movie theater, as, uh, the, the mayor said, then this group could sit down at the beginning and the council could express, um, you know, whatever, whatever issues, concerns, input they might have. Developer could ask questions of staff as well as council, get feedback and so forth. And then we'd have some clear expectations as the process moved forward. And I think that's more in line with what-
Do they have any involvement with the negotiations of a project?
I think that's, the, the council, I mean, the, I think the attorney can weigh in here. The council representatives on that wouldn't necessarily be involved in the review and, and input and negotiations or process because you're, they're gonna be the ultimate decision-making body at the end.
Right.
So, it'd be inappropriate for council to have input throughout the process. They'd be more of, of, of support and, um, you know, questions and input and getting general feedback to the developer. I don't know if the attorney wants to comment on the appropriate role of, of council in that committee.
Pretty comment. Be exactly like the safety committee. We would not make any decisions. We would just let-
Periodically, like you said, quarterly, maybe after you put, if you-
Right. And we would just let them know, "Oh, by the way, you need to talk to whomever in whatever department."
To answer questions, give them direction where they-
Right. I mean, and I have people ask me all the time and so I'm sitting down, and I'm sure